Start today with a roll call. Mayor Seaman, here. Councilmember Costalano, here. Councilmember Moulton, here. Councilmember Arroyo, here. Councilmember Bauer, here. And Councilmember Bergel, here. All right. Will everybody please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and freedom. It's amazing that y'all still do that.
And so now we are going to, we did not have closed sessions today. So we're going to go into the mayor's announcements and we are going to start with the proclamation for Administrative Professionals Day. And Councilmember Bergel is going to read that. Thank you. Is there someone here to receive this proclamation? If our support staff could come forward to the podium, please. Thank you. So in recognition of Administrative Professionals Day, April 27th, 2022. Whereas, April 27th, 2022 has been designated Administrative Professionals Day. And whereas Administrative Professionals Day is observed annually in workplaces nationwide to recognize the important contributions of administrative professionals. And whereas the work of administrative professionals require advanced knowledge and expertise in communications, computer software, office technology, project management, organization, and customer service. And whereas the city of Eureka recognizes the importance and contributions of highly skilled administrative professionals in the success of office operations. And whereas the city is extremely proud of the city's talented and highly skilled administrative professional staff and officially recognizes and appreciates their hard work and support, their continued professional growth. And whereas during the pandemic, administrative professionals have been instrumental to the departments they support, tackling new challenges and exhibiting grace under pressure while helping coworkers stay connected, engaged, and productive. Now therefore, I, Kim Bergel, on behalf of the Eureka City Council and the mayor, do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2022 as Administrative Professionals Day and express our gratitude for the professional support that our administrative team provides to the staff and the community. And anybody is welcome to speak, but Assistant City Manager Powell said you might not like to, so we're not going to make you speak either. We'll just celebrate you.
Well, I think I will speak for everyone when I say thank you for the recognition. And I think all of us here are just appreciative of working for the city and working for, just working to help the community and help make things go smoothly because we all know that everybody is doing their part to help make the wheels turn. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Rick Knapp here? Okay. And next up, we have our Bike Month Humboldt proclamation. Councilmember Bauer.
All right. This is a proclamation in recognition of Bike Month Humboldt, May 2022. Whereas bicycle travel is an effective means to improve air quality, reduce energy consumption, increase physical activity, and improve public health. And whereas bicycle commuting benefits both employees and employers through better employee health and fitness, reduce commute costs, reduce need for auto parking, and increased employee productivity. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists has designated the city of Eureka as a bicycle-friendly community at the bronze level because the city exhibits a sustained commitment to cycling. And whereas the voters of the city of Eureka in November 2020 passed Measure H, which will provide increased funding for the improvement and maintenance of the city's bikeway system. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists has designated May as Bike Month nationally. And whereas the Bicycle Month Humboldt Coalition offers many events for bicycle riders of all ages to celebrate bicycling in the Humboldt Bay area in May, including a bicycle celebration at the Jefferson Community Center on Saturday, May 21st. Now therefore, I, Scott Bauer, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Bike Month Humboldt in the city of Eureka. Urges all citizens to support and participate in these and other activities that contribute to the health of the community and the environment. And urge businesses to provide bike parking and other provisions to support bicycle use in the city. And encourages its residents and visitors to ride safely when bicycling in the city and for motorists to be safe and respectful of cyclists sharing the roads of the city. And encourages residents to ride a bicycle to meet as many of their transportation needs as possible.
And just make sure your little green light is on, so.
Green light's on.
Ready to go then.
Right. We're running no stop signs. So on behalf of the Humboldt Bay Bicycle Commuters Association and Bike Month Humboldt Coalition, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for approving this proclamation and urge all of you and staff to participate in activities and events that are planned for the month of May. And as Councilman Bauer pointed out in the proclamation, we have a special event this year that we haven't had before. And that's on May 21st. It's a Saturday. It's an outdoor event at the Jefferson Community Center. And that's a three-hour event. So being that a lot of people are still working from home, we decided in lieu of having the weekday lunchtime rallies, that we're going to have this special celebration. So there's going to be a lot of things going on there. And there'll be bike safety things, there'll be free helmets, there'll be music, pedal-powered music and smoothies, and many, many, many more things. So I think it's going to be fun for all of us. So thanks again. Appreciate you.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks. I plan on being there, by the way.
Well, that leads me to another comment. You shouldn't have said that, I guess. The very first, probably the second year that the Humboldt Bay Bicycle Commuters Association was in existence, we started in 1982. So come August, we'll be in business for 40 years. But about the first year, mayor, your mayor back then, let's see, gosh, what's his name? He was very famous. Huh?
Was it Lavalley?
Mayor Moore.
Yeah, no, this is Moore.
Yes. Fred Moore. And I asked Fred if he would speak to our rally and he said he would. Then he said, "Well, what should I say?" And I say, "You say that the city is committed to providing for the needs of bicyclists and that you're going to have a citizens committee undertake an effort to get a bike plan for the city of Eureka." And he says, "Well, how are we going to get that?" And I said, "I'm going to help you get it." And we did. Within a few months, we had a bike plan and an application for funding for the primary bike routes in the city and most all the bike parking that still exists.
Well, I'm super excited to continue that because I could talk about many we're already getting for bike plans.
Yeah. So see if you can top that. All right?
I'm working on it.
We'll see you there. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have the Art, Culture, and Creativity Month proclamation, and that's going to be read by, I would ask, please, if people could be respectful of this situation in here now?
We're trying to be as respectful as we can considering the circus that we're in.
Councilmember Moulton.
Thank you, yes. In recognition of Art, Culture, and Creativity Month, April 2022. Whereas, the city of Eureka celebrates the role that the arts and creativity play in helping us navigate the pandemic, amplify the need for racial equality, and highlight the power of the arts to change our lives for the better. And whereas, Eureka arts organizations work in partnership to support the arts and creativity in Eureka as an essential part of our thriving community through services including youth programs, public art initiatives, artists in schools, the Jumpstarts Artist and Juvenile Hall program, Arts Alive, and numerous festivals and special events. And whereas, the Ink People partners locally with the Eureka Arts and Culture Commission. And whereas, there are numerous arts and culture organizations and sites throughout Eureka, including the Morris Graves Museum, the, uh-oh. Daguru Louis, thank you, Weought Cultural Center, the Clark Museum, and the Eureka Theater, the Redwood Art Association, the Eureka Chinatown area, the Eureka Street Art Festival Murals, and many others. And whereas, Eureka has one of only 14 cultural districts in the state of California. And whereas, Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month of April brings statewide awareness and advocacy that recognizes the crucial role of arts, culture, and creativity in the lives of everyone in California. And whereas, the city of Eureka recognizes that the arts and creativity support student success and lifelong learning, provide key job skills, and bring joy to our community while strengthening our connections. And now therefore, I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Seaman and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 22, 2022, as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month and encourages everyone to celebrate the power of the arts in our community. All the artists are busy in their studios right now, so we're just going to have to tuck this away.
Okay, so I just have a few things to mention. And I will start with the more solemn stuff first. I want to recognize the passing of Donna Wright, who was the director and CEO of the Greater Eureka Chamber of Commerce. Donna was at almost all council meetings. If she wasn't watching on Zoom, she would watch them later. And she always made sure to let us know how she felt about everything that happened in the meetings. And I appreciated her, the vigor with which she defended all of her causes and all of her folks. I adored Donna. We were very close. Everybody was close with Donna. I wasn't closer than other people, but everybody felt like she was their best friend because that was how she treated people. And so our condolences certainly go with her family, her staff, her friends. And in honor of her passing, we will be flying the flag at half-staff on Friday and on Saturday in her honor. You know, there's just really nothing more, you can just talk forever about it, but we're all a little beside ourself, I think. So I wanted to make sure that we recognized Donna. And I wish that was it, but I also want to recognize Michael Egan, who was active on our Historic Preservation Commission, also passed in the last couple of weeks. So he served with us. Donna was a champion for businesses. Michael has been a champion for historic preservation. And then the final person I want to mention is Melissa Morrison, who was a local Girl Scout leader, which doesn't sound like a lot, but she was incredibly impactful for decades. She has been helping young women and also others who are involved in soccer. And she was really a champion for children. So as I mentioned, all of these people, the business, the historic preservation, children, they're all leaving really rich and important legacies. And it's a really important time for us to think about what is the legacy that we're leaving. And really be grateful for all of the work that they've done in the past. So I wanted to mention that. Now I'm going to talk about some of the more pleasant things, including the last week, I got to attend a luncheon for Marianne Hansen. She is the executive director of First Five. First Five is an agency that works for the betterment of children and families in Humboldt County. And she was recognized as Senator McGuire's Woman of the Year. And so that was a very wonderful event, and I was grateful to be invited and included in that. Tomorrow morning, I get to go to one of my favorite annual events. It's Eureka City Schools, Every Student Succeeds. And that is an event where they pick one student from every school in Eureka that's really overcome some obstacles. They've been resilient, which I think can be almost any student at this point. It's been a hard couple of years. And so tomorrow morning, we'll get to hear their stories, and it's always an uplifting and wonderful occasion. Next week, Pathway to Pay Day is returning, which is one of our programs where we work with folks, helping them find work, training them on how to do interviews. That has been an incredibly successful program where almost everybody ends up with a job, and I'm looking forward to that. It is also Bring Your Kid to Work Day. I heard today we have 18 employees registered to bring their kids next week, and I get to have lunch and pizza with them and talk to them about the good work their parents do. So that'll be fun. I am continuing to work on access to oral health care. Tomorrow, we have another meeting to talk about what are some strategies to get more dentists here. And on Saturday, the 30th, will be the Rhododendron Parade. It's been on hiatus for a couple of years, and so it will be great to have it back. And I understand a few of our council members are going to be participating in it. So that is my mayor's report for this week. And we will move on then to presentations, and we do have a presentation today. And I believe Recreation Supervisor Fazio is going to introduce May the 4th event. And Recreation Coordinator Jim Thomas.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you so much. So I'm actually going to turn it over to Jim, and he is going to let you know a little bit about an event we have coming up in just a couple of weeks.
Good evening, mayor, and good evening, council. On May the 4th, hence the name, May the 4th, we'll be having a free and open-to-the-public event at Sequoia Park in partnership with the Sequoia Park Zoo Foundation and the Humboldt-Dell Nord Film Commission. At this event, we will have costumers. We will have a costume contest as well for those 16 and under with prizes. We will have an obstacle course as well as other activities based on crafts and temporary tattoos. We will have a photo opportunity with an actor named Kevin Thompson, who played an Ewok in Return of the Jedi as well. And we're hoping as many people will come down and make it out that day as possible. It's 3:30 to 5:30, May the 4th.
And then we'd like to invite the Film Commission and Lee from the Sequoia Park Zoo Foundation. Oh, and Jim from the zoo.
Mayor, council members, super excited to talk about our May the 4th event. Cassandra and I, well, let's just say, though, people go up on the Redwood Skywalk, if you're a Star Wars fan, the immediate thing you think of is this is the forest moon of Endor. Any Return of the Jedi fans, if you're not a Star Wars fan, you're not going to get it. But all the folks that come and visit the Redwood Skywalk always talk about and make that reference. And so Cassandra and I, you know, immediately started working together, conspiring on how we could work on this May the 4th event. Cassandra's wanted to do this for a very long time. We're calling this our baby event, but our hope is that it's going to be a regional event. And really what we're trying to do is promote the region to Star Wars fans, who will come from all over to an event, especially one where we can be up on the Redwood Skywalk. Our portion at the zoo is a 21-plus event after hours. We're encouraging costumes. Kevin will be there to take pictures with folks up on the Redwood Skywalk. We're working with our Ecos Cafe to have a cantina style, much like the Star Wars movie. It's going to be amazing. Reservations are almost all. In fact, I think we're going to up our number just a little bit because almost all the reservations are gone to come to that event. You have to have a reservation. If you're interested, come to our website. But I really want to thank park staff, Cassandra and the Film Commission. This has been a great opportunity for us to not only talk about how important the zoo is, but how important the park is and how we're working together on this project. It's been really fantastic. You want to say anything, Cassandra?
Yeah, really briefly, that I really appreciate the time that I've spent working with the Zoo Foundation and the park and the city staff. Everybody's been utterly amazing to work with, very patient with us while we dealt with Lucas Films and trying to organize this. And I really look forward to launching the baby event and seeing how big we can go countywide and hopefully both counties, actually, that we represent that Return of the Jedi did film in. So we're excited that this could turn into something rather big.
And Cassandra, I'd just like for you to explain to people that, you know, you have worked with Lucas Films. You know, you can't just have a Star Wars event.
Correct. Well, you
You can.
Yes. Well, you can, but you might lose your house if you do it wrong. Yes, you know, they have kits and media kits and things. And the problem is they have so many May 4th events around the world that they are having to process that, as well as they have a huge once-a-year festival at the end of May. So getting time with them and trying to find out what the do's and don'ts are, you know, you have to make sure you do all of that, and it's a process. We make sure to do our process.
I really wanted to point that out because this is a partnership, and what you bring is that connection to be able to get those permissions, that we're not just the, you know, some version of May, like a
Yeah, and they were really appreciative, and they realized too that we are film history because we do have the locations where Endor was filmed, both in Humboldt and in Del Norte. They are the ones, actually, Lucas Films is sending the costumers. They have to have certain customers that have permission from them, so we're tied in with them that way as well, as well as Kevin, who played the Ewok, who will be attending the event for us as well. So yeah, we definitely have some team players with them. But again, working with the staff and everybody was so patient while we did that process.
No, it's wonderful that we were able to work together.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are now at public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. The policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Do we have anybody who would like to make public comment? Come on up.
Hi. I'm Teri Roman-Little with Redwood Coast Montessori. We're a public charter school in Manila and Arcata. And I'm here tonight to call out one of your city council members and demand that she takes some ownership for what she did on Saturday. So our school has a long tradition of enjoying the perilous plunge, and we don't just do it, we do it up. So Kim Bergel, once again, joined in with the Redwood Coast Montessori Rainbow Vixens this year, and we happened to earn a trophy. So I've been holding on to it because I made the costumes, but it's Kim's turn to take it and show it off for a little bit. Our team raised almost $1,000. We're about five bucks short of our $1,000 goal as the perilous plunge, supporting Redwood Discovery Museum and Pal Camp, which as we know is a valuable asset to our whole community. And so a little round of applause for Kim Bergel, Rainbow Vixen. I don't know how to hand this over, but
Oh, you can grab that pen.
All right.
I'm wearing this mask as a symbol of empathy for all the people that you mentioned that have had their lives cut short in the prime of their lives after taking the vax shot. It's a terrible thing. My wife just got out of hospital for the seventh time since October after taking her first vax shot. And pretty much you guys are responsible for that thing here in Eureka. You still have a vax mandate in effect for city employees, which means anyone that even peripherally works for the city has to take a vax shot to do any kind of work, whether it be sweeping a fucking gutter or anything else.
Language, please.
My empathy is gone. Beyond that, you guys spend so much time on awarding people for this and that and the other and wasting your time and our time on marbles and sandwiches and street sweeping and everything else, that I thought that, I have a minute and 43 seconds left, I thought that it would be appropriate to award you all with something appropriate. So to express our appreciation for all of your efforts to turn this town into a shithole.
Language.
I would like to award you all with the Golden Plunger. And I would have licked it to make it stick better, but believe me, it's been used. So at any rate, so besides wasting your time on stupid crap like a $30 million fiasco in Old Town that's going to do nothing but destroy the existing businesses down there, why don't you spend your time on doing something that will benefit the community? I'm asking you especially because you, you, Kim, are using my nephew for his platform to spread your nonsense when, because you can't, you can't get a platform. My nephew has a platform, and you're using him. I don't appreciate that. You all need to think about what you're doing. You're not representing the community. You were elected to represent the community, and yet you're following your own agendas and paying no attention whatsoever to what the community needs or wants. And you especially, leave my nephew alone.
My name is Charles Wilson. My wife and I watch a number of Chinese news channels. Shanghai's got 26 million people, and they've been locked down with zero tolerance for more than three weeks now. The residents the residents, if you test positive, they take your kids away. People are prohibited from leaving their homes. I heard rumor about them welding the doors shut on these high-rise buildings, and I didn't believe it. Then I saw the video of them doing it, and then some of them, they just padlock, but it's, it's, it's a pretty sad situation there. Markets have closed or empty. Delivery people can't deliver because they're also locked up. The food distribution system has collapsed, just like our court system collapsed last year. Starving people have stormed supply points, and they've broken barriers in the streets and struggled to find their, they, well, they tried to avoid the enforcers. I saw this one picture of them. They had a couple hundred people behind a barrier, and all of a sudden, they let the people go, and they started rushing out just like a flood because they had, they only had two hours. two hours or so to go get the food and everything there before they had to be back, otherwise they'd be penalized. Everyone is screaming and banging pots. Now, these buildings are next to each other. If you've ever been down in like LA or something like that, you know, you're, you're way up in the air, but it's a short distance between the buildings. So you're banging their pot, they're banging their pot, you're screaming, they're screaming. It's, it doesn't sit very well. And the Communist Party is unyielding and maintaining a zero tolerance. Now, I don't know what their purpose is because essentially they're just encouraging them to revolt, if anything. I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but anyway, this is what is happening there. So anyway, the Chinese situation is similar to ours. You get all this government and you can't trust them anymore and the more they do things, the less you trust them.
I'm Genevieve Wilson. Whatever he said that before, my husband said, it's a communist society. We don't want to be a communist society, okay? Because I just heard somebody say, the major news say communism and capitalism is the same thing. Give me a break. Capitalism is a free marketing. Communism is monopoly. Government get the benefits. So we don't want misinformation, disinformation like the vaccine thing. Now, don't even say that is a vaccine. It's a biological agent. People call me anti-vax. I said, please don't call me anti-vax. This is not a vaccine. And besides, they won't let you know what in it until 2025. You eat everything you need, find out what in it. How many vaccine injury we see? And children, they get better 99.5. And please, don't even let them pass the law. The children have to take the vaccine next year. Or be the old people, they didn't get rid of me because I'm not gonna take it. My fam- my family, no, friend of mine, three months cannot walk. The husband put her in the nursing home. Three of my friends have open heart surgery. And I go to see them, I like the dance, the music. Went to, around the corner, go to the fun, Fortuna Monday Club. They said, where is your vaccine passport? And you still have to wear a mask. What is that? If you can smell fart, I mean, the language, that mean doesn't work. And my, my point is, if I have a, what you call a immunity from my natural immunity, God give you a natural immunity? God give you no to smell? And so you cannot do that to people. Am I a second-class citizen? Okay, I, I have older husband in the past and also I'm a nurse. I don't have time to do the jury duty. So I read my constitution. You need to get a try for jury try. So I say, if I want a jury try, I should be a jury, right? So this time I sign up, I say, I will be there. But I cannot wear a mask because when I'm running around in, in the window without a mask, I'm huffing and puffing. And besides, that's not right. So she say, well, we are like a prison. You have to wear a mask when you go through the jury duty. Then I'm being deferred. I want to do my duty as a, as a, as American, follow the constitution, the common law and then natural law. God is provided. And I had been kicked out of, what you call a casino parking lot. I just gave you a recipe to help them to stay healthy, take your vitamin D. They say you cannot come, you are being banned tonight. If you want to, I say, I didn't do anything wrong under the speak to the manager. He said, well, you'll be banned for 30 days. We are a dominus terrorist when you tell people the good things. But thank you. But I hope you all, we don't want to turn into communists and nobody should lock anybody down, freedom of choice.
Do we have any other public comment?
Hi, my name's Terry Wilcox. I'm a 15-year resident of Eureka and I love this place with all my heart. I don't want to leave it, but my brain tells me I'm going to have to in order to live to be 80 or 90 because no matter how much you people want to sit there and deny it, you were elected to take care of us, the citizens, to keep our town safe, sanitary and well-repaired. Well, as I said, I've been here 15 years. I live on N Street, so I'm confused as to which two council members are actually my council member because, you know, I'm on 4th, I'm 5th, whatever. But that's not what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to state that in 15 years, all I've watched Eureka do with my street from 7th, well, 6th to 14th is dump fill. That's all they do. They come down, they fill the holes and that's it. Spring rains come, all the fill gets blown out. Between me and my roommates, we have had to replace eight, we figured it up today, eight complete front ends on our vehicles. Eight vehicles with entire front ends, all the drive components. I have a front-wheel drive, so not only do I wear out the steering, the drive components get ripped up. I have complained time and time again. I have met with several members of the commi- of the council who are not here right now, but except for Kim, and nothing seems to happen. So I gripe about that and I gripe about that. I also am appreciative of the little bit of work that Ross Park got. That pad needed definitely to be replaced, but what good is it if the homeless are gonna come up and sleep on it and urinate on it and defecate on it? I have chased, because I live diagonally from it, as you know, Kim, diagonally from there, I have chased people out of the park. I've actually stood with a police officer on more than one occasion when he has tried to get people to vacate, eight or nine of them. One officer and eight or nine people is not a good number, so I'll stand there. And when I, as a citizen, state anything about the crime, the bad streets, the lighting sucks on my street, my part of the street, I get looked at like I've got three heads. Well, you've heard that part of it. And I still am upset about the needle litter and the needles. Next door to me is HRC and I pick up needles in front of that place every day. Those people are trying to recover. They don't need to see those needles, I know from experience. Thank you.
Well, here we are, another city council meeting and I can tell you that most of us don't want to be here. We are really tired of the issues and the issues will not go away. We address them. We can start, we can shut up and people try to shut us up, but the issues will persist and continuously grow. Maintaining the status quo is deadly and costly, as we say around here. Old Town is just, after Devil's Playground got cleared out and somebody claims that is their great political accomplishment, Old Town is just overrun, overrun by mentally deranged people that scream, yell, drag sleeping bags behind them, spill things everywhere, loot, pillage, vandalize, defecate, shoot up, needless to say, expose themselves. We had that before and somebody thought that would be a funny thing. But anyway, the thing is, you guys have to steward and you haven't steward the city well. And those that caused the problems or benefited from it are obviously not fit to solve those issues at hand. But Eureka is in freefall and if Seattle is dying, then Eureka is drowning and there are no two ways around it. And I'm really stoked with all the positive things. The Lucas Festival, great, we love everything that would potentially bring people back into Old Town, but it's not happening. You sit there and nobody's coming by. It's super frustrating. It's just homeless people staggering up and down the road if anybody is going, is going there. And people have abandoned Old Town. And you see it that the businesses are shutting down as quickly as they, as they come. The Flip Flop Store closed again. I see three, four empty businesses on, on, on two blocks on F Street alone. It's mayhem. It's mayhem and you guys gotta figure it out. And as we always say, you know, at first the problems got denied, they kept growing, then, you know, those problems got acknowledged and then they were, you know, presumably not unique. There are other communists that don't have those problems in the magnitude we do, but we need unique approaches. We need trailblazing programs. We need to hold people accountable and we have an approach, we have to have an approach in our programs that goes beyond harm reduction because harm reduction kills us all. We need an approach that says harm none with and within this community. So we gotta hold people accountable. We gotta put an end to this mayhem in our streets, otherwise Eureka is a ghost, ghost town in the making. So make Eureka safe again and get politically accountable. You will be held accountable. Talking about legacy, what is your legacy, guys? Your legacy is having catered to Sister Morphine and her entourage, death, decay and destruction, the fruits of harm reduction, as seen by Hatcher, Iguiz, etc., PP. The needle litter, the crime, the decay, the vandalism, it's disgusting, it's unsanitary. Tourists avoid Eureka like the plague that they very well might catch here. You guys gotta step up to the plate.
Mike Kersch of Eureka. He's correct. The city of Eureka, Police Department, etc., is letting this town go to hell. Encapments all over the place. Encapments in the 2030 park. You have to constantly call the police to take action. City of Eureka has destroyed the history of Eureka by tearing things down and not building them back, leaving vacant lots, homeless move in. Example, one of the biggest switch and bait signs we got on Humboldt, on Humboldt Highway in front of the mall and all that is a picture of Fort Humboldt. I could look back in the 1850s where you go up there and the tourist says, where is Fort Humboldt at? You guys need to get someone activated to get Fort Humboldt built back to what it was like because that brings tourism here. I've talked to the Grand Association and they say they don't come here because there's no fort to see. Grant, he was an American Civil War hero, helped win the Civil War. He lived there. He was assigned there. He came from Fort Vancouver on hardship tour, never went home. So he retired after three months or three years, whatever it was the time. But we've let that history go. Tourism want to come here and see stuff. They want to turn around and go home. All of the United States have got historical places that are beautiful and kept up and you get tourism up the gazoo. You let this go, you lose, lose tourism, you lose tax money. People want to move away. We need to start developing Eureka as a historical town and develop the historical things that are already here instead of letting the homeless take over. We need to do something with them. Ship them off to military barracks, which have been closed for years that they can use for the homeless to live. Do something. You gotta do something. It's called get off your duffel bag and fix Eureka's history. We've got a lot of history here. Look at the Carson Mansion. More pictures are taken of the Carson Mansion than any place in the United States, plus to the White House. That's history right there, living history. We let Fort Humboldt go, we don't put it back like it was back in the 1850s, we don't get tourism here. Gotta do something to get tourism here. That's our, that's our base. We're losing the lumber company, we're losing all kinds of businesses. So we have to come up with better things. Think out of the box. Restore Fort Humboldt. It used to belong to Eureka, did you know that? Eureka used to own Fort Humboldt, but they gave it to the state with the understanding the state was gonna put it back together. They never did. Look at Fort Point in San Francisco, Fort Ross. They get big tourism there. General Jackson's home. I've been there. It's beautiful. It's great. So all this historical stuff we got in Eureka, you're letting it rot away.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'd just like to say, appreciate everybody come up to me and say hi. I'm not here to be against anybody here. I'm only here to try to hold you guys accountable for the mess the city of Eureka is in. On my way in, the usual at the stop, stoplight at the Bay Area Mall, except with a little twist. Looks like somebody's got their little give me free stuff sign twirling around like it's a pizza sign. So it's really good distraction for the drivers trying to get, get out of the mall. And I have a friend named Kenny, he's homeless here in Eureka. I met him like four years ago. I see he's still not getting any help of any kind. He's usually has no shoes, his feet are usually bleeding and on a recent live video, you can see on Facebook, you can see him walking through Old Town dragging his blanket, which goes about four feet behind him, sweeping the sidewalk as he goes. People like that need help. He was given a hot shot and his brain is fried. He has no way to, to pull out of his situation and there's nobody helping him. If there was just one Kenny, that might be one thing, but there's lots of Kennys in Eureka and nobody's helping any of them. I mean, they sleep next to needles. You could try to buy them some food, but you better give them the food because they'll starve to get heroin in their system. I've, I've given Kenny money before to watch him go across the street by the Samoa Bridge and buy heroin. The fact is, I've been coming here for four years and looking for some accountability and something, somebody to do something about the things we come and talk about and the fact is, nobody does nothing. I can't think of one thing that you all have ever done to improve Eureka. Artwork, painting on the side of a building and murals don't cut it. That doesn't make Eureka safe and it doesn't help anybody that's in that situation where they can't get out of it. So they're just running the streets of Old Town, day and night, rain or shine, and living that life to the burden of everybody else in the community. Am I boring you? Because it looks like I'm boring you. And maybe that's the reason nothing ever happens. Maybe this is too boring. I mean, if I was in charge of helping Eureka to be a safer city, I would do something about it and I'd be proud to do something about it, but it seems like you guys are steered the other direction to make it go downhill. And I wonder why every day? Why would somebody want their city to be a crap hole? And that's what it is. You guys need to step up and do something. I mean, enough is enough. I don't know why you don't want it to be a good place, but you obviously don't.
Scott Chandler. I had to bring a cheat sheet. Well, all your little fun things look like they were fun, but like they, everybody said it doesn't get things done. It's kind of lightweight. And I just have a few things to say. And I'd like to start with your willingness to harm the downtown and Old Town merchants by not paying any attention to what any, well, you might have paid attention, but it didn't do any good. All the people that came up here pleaded with you, please don't build your building behind Las Coast Brewery in the parking lot. Now, build the building, but why can't you put in two layers of parking garage? Everybody would be happy. The building would be there and there'd be parking. You could double the parking, but didn't happen. And then Councilman Bauer, I was watching the city council meetings a while back and you said that every house in Eureka has to be electric, all the kitchen has to be electric or we're gonna be underwater in 10 years. Come on. Come on. That's ridiculous. I used to build homes, restaurants, and in the 70s, we would build and it was all electric and the PG need give you a medallion to put on the door. Then come to find out, electricity isn't all that good. It costs more than natural gas. And what you have against natural gas, I don't know. I wish we could converse instead of me just... It's a sad thing. It's sad. And then I see you spent $150,000 of taxpayer money and you got the same results with those folks talking to you as everybody that comes up here. This is my third time coming up to tell you about the sidewalks I tripped over. No crews been out to grind them now. If I still had my $2 million insurance for working on streets and sidewalks, I had rent the machinery and do it. It'd only take a day. How come it's never happened? And the other day, an Asian fellow, an older guy tripped and fell down and one of the merchants saw it as one of the homeless circled the guy like a vulture. He ran off the bum and helped the guy up and the... I'm already running out of time. It's, it's sad. I, I see your enthusiasm with your little, with what you did, you know, your awards and stuff, but that's kind of lightweight for the city council. You got more important things, you know? That's like the peripheral, not what you just should do. I, I say shame on you people. You let this place go to hell. That's it. Shame, shame, shame.
Oh, thanks. I'm all wound up.
Do we have anybody else? Please? Ash Teeter, if you'd like to start.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, my name's Ash Teeter. Said before, my wife lost her job to the city of Eureka's discriminatory jab for job policy toward- Said before, my wife lost her job to the city of Eureka's discriminatory jab for job policy toward the end of last year. Last week, the county ended the local COVID emergency. And the Supreme Court, if you remember, it deemed that the vax mandate was unconstitutional when reviewing the OSHA case. Additionally, with the complete drop in case numbers locally and throughout the country due to Omicron, any pretense that the need for a vax mandate, it's all evaporated. So please do the right thing. Admit it was a mistake in the jab for job policy at the city of Eureka. And if you feel so inclined, maybe apologize or even make reparations to those negatively impacted by this unfair practice. Also, it's came to my attention that a number of building projects are set to negatively impact local businesses. One such was the proposed one to tear down Annie's Cambodian and put in a Starbucks and some other stuff. And that would draw business away from the jitter bean that's right across the street. And then on the other side of town, I heard there's like a hotel or motel close to Gold Rush. It's also going to be torn down and replaced with a Starbucks. Both projects bring in corporate coffee to hurt local coffee revenue. I see a lot of mentions and how important it is to support local business. Apparently this is just virtue signaling, not a true heartfelt sentiment. I see that Arcata is rehabbing old hotels or motels to serve as housing for the homeless. Perhaps this, along with cleaning up Eureka's needle problem, could increase safety within city limits. I don't know. Please consider what myself and others have said and thank you.
All right. Any others? All right, then I will close public comment and we will move on to that important, the important stuff that we do. So. We are moving on to public hearings. Item E1, general plan amendment petition for 3116 Harrison Avenue. I really did mean the stuff that you guys told us to do, but sorry that it didn't translate. So who, general plan update? Do we have?
That will be Principal Planner Getz.
That's what I meant to say. It's hard not seeing him on the screen. Principal Planner Getz. Welcome.
So Senior Planner Lisa Savage is going to do the presentation for you this evening.
Are you ready to move forward? Okay.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, council members, Madam Mayor. Before you this evening is Pearson Properties' general plan amendment petition for 3116 Harrison Avenue. Approval of the petition will allow Pearson Properties to apply for a general plan amendment and zone reclassification to change land use designation and zoning for two APNs, 013-191-026 and 027. Here's a bird's eye view of the subject property location. And zooming in, the property is located out the southwest corner of Harris Street and Harrison Avenue. To the east of the center line of Harrison Avenue is the county's jurisdiction. So that would be on the side where Shaffer's Hardware is. Each parcel is approximately 0.33 acres and APN 013-191-026 is unimproved and 027 is improved with a 3,000 square foot office building. Pearson Properties seeks to change the general plan land use designation from professional office, P O, in Brown to neighborhood commercial in Tan, which would allow the site to be rezoned from hospital medical, H M, to neighborhood commercial, N C. To approve a general plan amendment petition request, council must find that the amendment has the potential to serve the public interest. In this case, the proposed amendment and subsequent rezone have the potential to serve the public interest by allowing for more flexible use of the property as the change would allow for both medical and commercial office uses as well as a number of other uses. So the sequence of events. Today, we are here for a general plan amendment petition. If council approves the petition today, the applicant can submit the general plan amendment and zone reclassification application. Approval by council today is not a guarantee of approval of the general plan amendment. If council approves the general plan petition, the general plan amendment will go to the planning commission for a public hearing. The planning commission will recommend action to city council to either approve, conditionally approve, or deny the general plan amendment. If the planning commission recommends approval, the general plan amendment will go back to council for a public hearing to approve, approve with modifications, or deny the general plan amendment. Therefore, because the general plan amendment has the potential to serve the public interest, staff recommends city council hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Eureka to approve the general plan amendment petition for the property at 3116 Harrison Avenue. Here's a suggested motion and myself and Principal Planner Getz are available for questions. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any, any questions? I don't see any. Councilmember Royal, any? Okay.
No, thank you.
So do we have any comments? Oh, you, Councilmember Molton?
Could you describe the typical or what might be considered a neighborhood commercial? What sort of things could that include?
Is my microphone on?
Could you hear?
Yeah. Yes. So neighborhood commercial could be small grocery stores like offices other than, you could have professional offices, which would be medical office, but also just general commercial offices. There's a, I could read through the whole list if you're interested.
I was just looking for a generality. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Sorry. Senior Planner Savage. Neighborhood commercial also includes housing. Am I correct? Or no?
It can, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, I will open it up for public comment. Do we have any comment on this item? On Zoom? All right. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to council for comments or motion.
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. So let's vote.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
You know, I just realized I did the wrong language. I didn't open up the public hearing. I said public comment. So if there's anybody who wants to speak to the public hearing that didn't speak to public comment, we can do that. Okay. I'm sorry.
Mayor Seaman, I think it was, I think it was clear that we were having the public hearing.
All right. I'm a little discombobulated right now.
Understandable.
All right. So we will move on then to the consent calendar. Did anybody have anything they wanted to pull? I didn't hear of anything earlier. And if not, do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Move to accept the consent calendar. That was written. Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Castellano. All in favor or everybody vote?
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Now we are moving on to G, which is legislative action correspondence. I have not heard of any, but does anybody have any important timely legislative action letters that we need to send that are not on our agenda? All right. Then we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. And we are going to Bill Number 1012, Community Oversight on Police Practices Board. And to that, I will go to City Manager Slaughter.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was introduced to you guys at your previous meeting on April the 5th. The ordinance is unchanged with the exception of one area that council had directed staff to change. And so we added section 7A to include a, to ensure that there is a standing agenda item on each of the agendas of the cop boards to allow for input and reports from community-based organizations. Other than that, the ordinance is the same as was introduced last week. And so staff is recommending that we adopt Bill Number 1012, Community Oversight on Police Practices Board. If there's any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Are there any questions on this? All right. Seeing none, I will open it up for a public comment. Do we have any public who'd like to speak on this? Come on up. Was I yes or? Okay. They may be here for that reason though. Okay. Then I will bring it back. Councilmember Bergo?
So I would like to waive full reading, read by title only and adopt Bill Number 1012, An Ordinance in the City of Eureka Repealing Citizens Oversight Board Title III, Chapter 33, Sections 200 through 207, and replacing with Title III, Chapter 33, Sections 200 through 208, Community Oversight on Police Practices.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion on the item? All right, everybody, let's vote.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. Next up, we're moving on to reports and action items. And I will invite Special Project Manager Mar-Salon to talk about award bid number 202213 Elk River Estuary Enhancement Project.
Hello, I'm Katie Mar-Salon. Okay, it looks like I'm on a mirrored screen now. So.
I was gonna say, we can see and hear you, so.
Okay, fantastic. I am a project manager with the Public Works Department and the agenda item this evening is about the results of our bidding process and effort and then also recommended action for an award. But we wanted to take this opportunity to provide a general project report, maybe kind of a general overview of the project for the city council and address any questions prior to moving into that recommended action. So if that's acceptable for the mayor and council members, then I would move into a PowerPoint presentation and provide that. And following that, you could, I can address that or we could move to discussion or public comment. Does that work?
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. Fantastic. So I'm going to do my best here to work these different pieces. Hold on, I've got share screen. Thanks for your patience. Okay. So you should see a screen with our project information here. So I have a few slides that are just about background to provide context and then just the elements of the project and then the implementation steps that we might be all looking forward to or expecting to occur next. So this is a view shed of Elk River entering Humboldt Bay. You can actually access this view right at the edge of the Hickshary Trail. And let's make these buttons work here. Okay. So project background. I always like to share this image. It just gives a point of reference that our project area is over here. This is where Elk River enters Humboldt Bay. But it's also very, provides context for the proximity to the mouth of Humboldt Bay. And we do have a large amount of wave energy and also kind of high storm flows that come out of Elk River. So this is a very dynamic location. A little closer view. This view on the left provides a blue line of our Elk River and other slough channels that are coming into the bay. And then also shows point of reference for Pound Road. And then this image on the right-hand side shows what the project would be bringing online. Our major features are a new tidal channel network that you see here in blue. And then these other yellow features are just upland edges, earthen berms. So in terms of location, we are at the southernmost end of the Eureka City Limits. The property was purchased in the 1980s for the development of the Elk River wastewater treatment plant. So this has been land that we've set aside for public purposes. The current parking access, if you wanted to get a view of the project, is off of Herrick and Highway 101. At the Herrick exit, there's parking here. And we currently have trail access from the Hickshary along the Eureka Waterfront Trail. The existing conditions for the site, we described the site as Area 1, north of the Elk River and Area 2, south of the Elk River. On the north side, we have approximately 25 acres. They're degraded intertidal wetland with approximately 20 acres of invasive Spartina. And then in Area 2, we have 89 acres of agricultural pasture. So most of this space, there's no connection to the Elk River, but most of the space is just linear agricultural ditches. It's underutilized, which historically this would have been part of the Elk River flood plain and connected to Humboldt Bay. The east side of the project is bounded by existing Highway 101 infrastructure. The west side is bounded by the remnant railroad infrastructure. To the north is Pound Road. And to the south, when we're finished with the project, folks will have access via the Humboldt Hill exit and 2B Road to the very south end here. So the restoration goals for Area 1 are to expand the existing channels. So widen and deepen existing tidal channels and to completely remove the current tide gate. There will be no more man-made infrastructure between the Elk River and the 25 acres. So this will be a fully inundated tidal area to allow for tidal regime twice a day. The repurposed excavated channel soil material will be used to fill the burrow ditches and to create marsh plains and mounded islands for habitat. We'll remove Spartina and also provide public access in Area 1 with a non-motorized boat launch and connection with the Eureka Waterfront Trail. In Area 2, the restoration goals are similar, but we have a lot larger space. So we're converting the pasture into a network of intertidal channels. All the excavated material that comes out for that channel network will be repurposed on site to create these earthen berm structures or upland edges called slope tidal ridges to contour the marsh plains as well as create mounded hummocks or islands. We'll remove invasive plant species and then also construct public access in Area 2, continuing the trail south to a new parking location at the end of 2B Road. So here's another viewpoint of Area 2, just to demonstrate the existing pasture, which the city currently has a grazing tenant there. And then what's occurring where you're not doing grazing? We do have some naturally kind of resident salt rush species and other native species that are very happy there. So we do see the potential to convert all 89 acres to really beautiful restored salt marsh. This is another viewpoint from Area 2. This will provide coastal access. And then we're getting into just a general kind of concept level overview here. So between Area 1 and Area 2, in total, we'll provide 114 acres of restored estuary and intertidal wetland habitat. We'll create approximately 2.8 miles of navigable channels and we'll construct the one-mile extension of the waterfront trail, the boat access area and the new parking. Okay, so that was the context and I'll jump into the project elements. The biggest work that we'll do at this site is changing the topography of the site. What you're seeing here, everything that's red and orange is all upland. So anything that's orange is a nine to 11-foot elevation and everything that is red is 11 feet and higher. So that kind of gives you a viewpoint of where we'll have these high points along the trail with a nice view shed out to Humboldt Bay and back into this wetland area. Everything that is green and blue becomes completely tidally inundated and underwater. So this is mud flat, low salt marsh and some of the yellow is like a high salt marsh. Along that eastern edge of the project, we are preserving some existing infrastructure. So. So obviously, when Highway one oh one came online, kind of turn of the century, throughout the past century, other utilities have been co-located. So we are preserving PG&E easement. If you ever drive this section, you'll see all the power poles, and then also fiber optic cables were co-located there. And then on the west side of the project, near the rail infrastructure, there is additional sewer line and other infrastructure there. So this project creates this new tidal marsh and salt marsh area, but also protects that infrastructure in place. And then a big project feature for us is having this restored salt marsh habitat and bringing back online native vegetation. So some of our rare and special status plants, the Humboldt Bay owl's clover, lingby sedge, and seacoast angelica are currently thriving at the site where we have smaller pockets. And so we're hoping that we'll be salvaging some of those and reintroducing them in places, and they'll have a plant, a chance to take root. We'll be preserving native soils, so even though grading will occur over a hundred and fourteen acres, we will be limiting the impacts to native soils to not overcompact the site and hoping for a kind of quicker uptake for re-vegetation. And we'll do continued wetland vegetation monitoring through our CRAM monitoring. Habitat is a big piece, so taking, you know, existing hundred and fourteen acres that have very limited tidal estuary brackish environment, and now providing that will, you know, provide aquatic fish and wildlife and shorebirds. And we do have some special status species that are at the project as well that we're hoping will thrive post-construction. So the public access is a big piece. This is just showing quick pictures along the Hickshary Trail where we will expand the existing access for kind of this trailhead area and also a new non-motorized boat launch. So what you're seeing in this far corner here is a nice deep channel that becomes wider through the project, and we build a footpath so you could bring a stand-up paddleboard or a kayak out, and at high tide, you can jump into that channel and come into this, into Elk River, or maybe even come into Humboldt Bay and come onto the Eureka Trail or whatever other dock or boat lock, boat access points. We'll also be providing that new connection to Humboldt Hill, where folks don't currently have an access point to either walk or bike into Eureka off of Highway one oh one. So this becomes that new trailhead location on the south end of the project, and then providing signage throughout the project as well. So that was my somewhat long, but trying to be brief, project highlights. And moving into implementation, this past year, we've completed our construction documents and bidding. We're moving into this pre-construction phase with construction this summer, and then a multi-year revegetation effort and a five-year monitoring plan. Immediately this year, we have had some pre-construction activity at the site. You may have observed, we're working closely with the California Conservation Corps. So they've done some early vegetation management. We're working on our avian nesting surveys and our year-one CRAM wetland monitoring surveys this summer. The work will have a sequence that lines up with all of our environmental permits, so we won't see large ground disturbance until June or July. But those first efforts will be fish relocation, all of our early surveys for any aquatic or turtle, and then moving into Spartina eradication, and then the earthwork and the grading. And then all of that large equipment has to be away from the Elk River edges by October fifteenth. So you'll see tidal connection to the project by October fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. And then we'll have ongoing efforts for revegetation and multi-years of removing Spartina and trying to maintain and monitor our site. So that was my, hopefully cramming a lot of information, giving you a good glance, and I'm happy to answer any questions. The agenda item is more specific to the bid effort that occurred. So we did advertise on March sixth. We held our bid opening on March thirtieth. We had a lot of participation for this project. We had six bids that were received. And after all the review, the apparent low bid is Ficus Construction, and all of their documents were intact, so staff is recommending award to them. And I think, yes.
Thank you. Oh, wait, do you have a slide with the, okay.
That was it.
Does anybody have any questions for Special Project Manager Mars- Marcelon? Councilmember Bauer.
Great presentation, Katie. I just had a question about the funding. I don't think, I don't, maybe I didn't hear it. Is it, is it Coastal Conservancy? And, I mean, who's funding this project?
It's a combination of sources, and I just, I stopped sharing because I have a few different slides, but I can pull one up if that helps. It might help me to read the actual list. So we've received funding through a number of state sources that are also then grant programs for funding, or, excuse me, federal sources that we, were funneled to us through the Coastal Conservancy. So the city is currently holding five different grants, one being the Ocean Protection Council, which is the California Resources Agency, a number directly through the State Coastal Conservancy, which was a Proposition eighty-four, and then a Proposition one. And then some of the, I would say, kind of higher level, or Eureka should have maybe some bragging rights, that we really did compete strongly with a National Coastal Wetlands Conservation Grant Program. That's a federal grant program that came with support with Coastal Conservancy. We have now received two rounds of funding through that. And then an additional federal grant is the National Coastal Resilience Fund, and that's the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, so that's another grant, federal level. So those are our big grant pieces towards the construction.
Well, it's a great project, and thanks to staff for chasing that money and getting that going. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Moulton.
I would actually just really love to have that report, so I can share it with the constituents in the second ward. Send it to us, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. There was a, I was hoping it would have been recorded. We, the, myself put together a presentation for the Humboldt Bay Initiative for their kind of, they do a symposium about bay-related projects, and they had indicated that possibly the presentation I made had been recorded, and we could share it and broadcast it, but I haven't gotten the handle on that yet. So if the slides were valuable to you, we can provide those. I have those ready to roll, and that'd be something that you could share as well.
Ah, the slides would be more valuable for me than a video, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Royal.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. That was really great, and it's super exciting to hear all of the good news about this project. And I just have a couple of questions. One of them was about the plant salvage. I know you mentioned some species of, you know, special note at the site. I don't know if they're all endangered or threatened or what their status is, but special status species. And I just wasn't sure, you know, I know that the re-veg is gonna happen later, but I wasn't sure who's going to be doing the plant salvage. Because I don't see it in here, and I know it has to happen, you know, before construction. So could you expand on that?
Yes, absolutely. So the, the the, the documents that were prepared for the earthwork contractor demonstrate all of the different grading components, and they have a responsibility to actually preserve and protect certain rare plant communities that are there. And then we don't want to salvage those and have them dry out during the summer months while that work is going on. So we actually have a bit of a sequence happening where they'll preserve those in place, and then at the final moment where, our biggest piece is in Area Two, we're connecting to the Elk River, and that will, will leave like an earthen plug in place between the Elk River and Area Two when they're out in Area Two doing a lot of that earthwork. But those special status plants are right on that bank, the south bank of the Elk River. So the direction to the earthwork contractor is that the city will select someone who's a qualified restoration kind of landscape handler. The earthwork contractor has to preserve those plants. And then at the final moment where we are gonna move through and take that earthwork step, we have a sequence where that, that we actually take the plant plus the, what would you call it, like the soils and the root community that they're with, all their host soils, and move them in a group, and that will be a selected restoration contractor. And we have not selected that, those folks yet. That would happen in, right at the end in October.
Gotcha. Yeah, I'm actually working on a really similar project with one of my other hats on in the Lower Mad River. A lot of moving parts with the, you know, protecting plants and then moving them, very similar kind of project area. So that makes sense to me. And then I, when I'm looking at these, the, you know, the bid summary, I guess I, I feel confident that, that, you know, if, if the bids come in, that the companies feel that they can, can meet these, you know, these needs. But I, I guess I, I'm just seeing so much of the lake rock and aggregate and boulders coming in so much lower from the lowest bid. And I, I'm concerned, I guess I just keep hearing about the costs of those materials going, you know, escalating. And so, you know, do staff feel that that's going to be something that, that those, you know, that these bid requirements can be met, essentially?
Your, I mean, all of those reactions that you had are the same reactions that staff had. So we did open these bids on March thirtieth, and we allowed a number of days to be able to evaluate all of those pieces. And the city was contacted by other bidders to verify. So we did share the, all of the bids and middles. It's all available to the public if anyone wants to review it. But we did not find any errors in the bid. We also took the additional step to confirm with the low bidder, even before I wrote the agenda report to you as council to say, these are the numbers, we're approving a very minimal contingency. You know, we have all of these checks and balances in place for the work. So this is, these are the numbers that we'll be holding. And I'll just say, in my experience, rarely, but it has happened where someone will withdraw a bid. If they see they found, and maybe they made an error in their bid, but this particular bidder said, our numbers are firm, we will stick with our numbers. So everyone has a different approach, I think. This type of project is not as, there are other types of projects we do, especially in public works, where, you know, linear feed of pipe, it has a fixed price, and we see similar pricing come in. Earthwork is really about the approach, and it's about the operator. And sometimes for an owner-operator, they can run their equipment at a different price point than maybe a larger firm with multiple crews or laborers. So those are good questions, because they're, I had the same questions.
Thank you. Mayor, may I ask just one more?
Um, sure, go ahead.
Okay. So debris disposal, I know it looks like there's not a lot, well, I guess, I'm wondering if there's much in the way of dredge, not dredge, but excavated spoils that need to be moved? And if so, if they can go to the, if there's any need for them to go still to the White Slough Project in the National Wildlife Refuge or elsewhere in the bay to, to do, or will they be used on site for those berms that you were talking about?
Right, so we are trying, we did an extensive amount of geotech work to look at the soils that were onsite to make sure that they'll provide structural, they'll give us the results we need to use as structural fill for those earthen berm features. So we are not proposing any off-haul of soil at this point. The only limited amount of off-haul or disposal will be for a very top level of organic material where we do need to set soil on top of soil to get an adequate compaction rate. So we are showing the contractor has a certain amount of footprint space within those berms where they have to pull off the top organic materials. And we're trying to utilize those within our hummocks and our other features. And if those are not, if we're not eligible to use those, and they have a lot of weed material, they will be off-hauled for green waste. So I don't know that that adds value for another project. It's mostly those top organics.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, is that it? See, Councilmember Castellana.
Thanks, and I've appreciated all of council's questions thus far. I was just curious if you could speak a little bit about this project and kind of resilience along the coastline at the, you know, at the south of Eureka there, and sea level rise, and how this can kind of aid to our efforts toward that.
Yes, so the reason that this project was competitive for grant funding, and we kind of named off those different grant sources, is that there, there are limited opportunities to provide sea level rise resilience data and, and projects like this. So this would have historically been a part of the Elk River floodplain. We also know before the railroad infrastructure and the highway infrastructure, the bay was very shallow neighboring this particular project, even just one foot and two foot depth on the old historic maps of the bay in this location. So the water wants to come back onto the site. And I feel really grateful to be involved in this project and be able to see that moving forward. The specific hydrologic modeling that was done for this project, we have mean, high, and high water currently between five point eight feet. And then we anticipate it by twenty fifteen, it will be as high as seven point seven feet. So the features within our project allow kind of detention or retention up to what we showed on that topography map, up to eleven feet before we have overtopping. It does provide a lot of flood relief for other things that are happening in the watershed, and we do anticipate that as the site is performing, we'll see that tidal, twice tidal, twice daily tidal regime coming into the site, and we'll, we'll have the results of the benefits of sediment accretion occurring across the marsh plains so that the site isn't just sitting to hold or adapt to sea level rise now, but as sediment accretion does come into the project, it will change those marsh plains, change the vegetation, and provide more longstanding sea level rise adaptation results. Does that help answer the question?
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Seen none, I will open it up for public comment.
Mayor, can I say just one thing? Before we move on, I just really want to thank Special Project Manager Marcelon. I can tell you, she's doing one heck of a job better than the previous staff member that was overseeing this project. That would be me. And so I, I really want to thank her. And also, I think we really need to thank the Coastal Conservancy. If it wasn't for them, the access to all of these funds and the support that we had through the Coastal Conservancy to reach out to all these agencies and have that support has been amazing. And as Katie mentioned, we are extremely competitive through this process, and it's, it's an outstanding project.
Right on, thank you. All right, now I will open it up to public comment. Is there anybody here who is here to speak on this item? Is there anybody online? Pam, who wishes to, all right. Then I'll bring it back for, what, let me, I just want to double check. It's just a report we need to, I'm sorry, I'm looking for, we're declaring, oh, the low bidder. Do we have a motion to do, to declare the low bidder?
I'll do it, Mayor, if you want.
Please do.
Well, feeling confident that they've confirmed that this bid is, is good, I will go ahead and make the motion to declare Ficus Construction the low bidder for bid number two zero two two Tac one three Elk River Estuary Enhancement Project and award bid number two zero two two Tac one three to Ficus Construction for the amount of three million sixty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and approve three million three hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred dollars for construction, which includes a contingency of approximately ten percent.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Everybody's already voting, so we're gonna just say vote.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes, and I'll take this opportunity to also just say thanks, and this is such an exciting project. It's, it's an incredible project, and everyone should be very proud of it.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Special Project Manager Marcelon. And next we are, you know what, let's, the next item is gonna be, take a while, it's seven thirty. Can we take an early break? Okay, I feel like I'm ready for it. See you back in. Do you need more than five minutes? We're getting close to the end. Five minutes. City council meeting. We are starting on item I two, under reports and action items. And this is drive-through options. And we have principal planner Getz to do a presentation.
So good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, as you mentioned, we're talking about drive-throughs and some of the options that might be available to the city. So probably the first question is, how do we define a drive-through? Both inland and the coastal portion of the city define a drive-through facility, as you might expect, where customers obtain services without leaving their car. Although in the coastal zone, we use the definition of drive-in. And I have one more definition for you to help with tonight's discussion. Formula business. A formula business is a use that provides a service, such as an ATM or coffee or fast food, where there's a contract or other arrangement that requires the business to maintain maybe standardized services or menus or uniforms or the exterior facade of the structure. And it causes the business to be substantially identical to some number of other businesses in some geographic area to be determined, such as within the city or the state or even the entire United States. And that's regardless of ownership or location. And given those wide parameters, I think we would be able to define a formula business generally as whatever we need it or want it to be, if we choose to go that route. So there are a lot of different kinds of drive-throughs. Here in Eureka, we have drive-through banks and ATMs. We have drive-through coffee shops. Drive-through pharmacies. Drive-through car washes. And drive-through restaurants. And some jurisdictions have drive-through cleaners. Drive-through liquor stores. And even drive-through wedding chapels. Altogether, in the city limits, we have 31 drive-throughs with 15 of them being food drive-throughs. And 11 of those could be considered formula businesses if formula businesses were defined as being the same as 10 or more businesses throughout the state, for example. We also have eight coffee drive-throughs. And again, either three or five of them could potentially be formula businesses, depending on how we define the formula business. We also have eight other types of drive-through locations. One is a pharmacy. Three of them are car washes. And four of them are banks. And of those, between five and seven of the locations could be considered formula businesses. So just to summarize, we have 15 food drive-throughs, eight coffee drive-throughs, and eight other types of drive-throughs. And between 19 and 23 of those 31 locations could be formula businesses, again, depending on how you define the formula business. So where are our drive-throughs? In the coastal zone, we have two drive-throughs in the neighborhood commercial zone. One in the planned shopping center zone. And 15 in the service commercial zone for a total of 18 drive-throughs. In the inland portion of the city, we have one drive-through in the hospital medical zone, six in the downtown zone district, two in the downtown west zone, and four in the service commercial zone for a total of 13 in the inland zones. We also have some drive-throughs that are not yet constructed or are awaiting entitlements. In the coastal zone, the first one is at Target where they're going to build a food drive-through. And this one is awaiting a coastal development permit from the coastal commission. The second one is also located in the coastal zone where an existing subway will be demolished and replaced with a coffee drive-through. And the former Sizzler and the Annie's Cambodian buildings will be demolished and a food drive-through will be constructed on that site. The last one is on the inland side of the city where the Pine Motel will be demolished and replaced with a coffee drive-through, as well as a restaurant that will not have a drive-through. With those new drive-throughs, there's a net increase of one food drive-through in the coastal zone. With one additional coffee drive-through, bringing the total in the coastal service commercial zone to 17 drive-throughs and 20 drive-throughs altogether in the coastal zone. On the inland side of the city, the food drive-throughs will increase by one in the service commercial zone, which brings the total in the inland service commercial zone to five drive-throughs with 14 total drive-throughs on the inland side. So what are some examples of how other cities regulate drive-throughs? In June of 2002, so 20 years ago, the city of Arcata adopted an ordinance to limit the number of formula restaurants allowed in the city to nine. They're prohibited in the central conservation area and on the plaza. And they also limit the number allowed in Valley West to six. At the time of its adoption, one of Arcata's planners endorsed the ordinance, saying it fulfilled several goals of the city's comprehensive plan, which included reducing auto-dependent activity, protecting the community's character, encouraging sustainable development, and fostering local investment in food establishments that meet local needs. Formula restaurants are principally permitted in Arcata's commercial general and commercial visitor zones. And formula restaurants are also allowed with a use permit in the industrial limited primary district. But if we look at Arcata's code for drive-through restaurants, they're only allowed in Valley West. In Fort Bragg, drive-throughs are only allowed at the rear of a building. And they're conditionally permitted in both their coastal and inland general commercial and highway and visitor commercial districts. And they're conditionally permitted in their central business district, but only when they're ancillary to a use that is primarily pedestrian oriented. And in Fort Bragg, formula businesses are considered big box retail. For the city of Sebastopol, the definition of a formula business is when it's substantially identical to 25 or more other businesses in the United States. Drive-throughs are prohibited unless they're in existing use or they're a car wash. The city of San Diego appears to allow drive-throughs in industrial zones. And at the end of 2021 was considering a ban on new drive-throughs in transit priority areas. And they appear to prohibit them in most other zones. Unfortunately, we were not able to easily find what happened to that ban they were considering. The city of Long Beach adopted a moratorium in May of 2019, but now conditionally permits drive-throughs in six of their nine zoning districts, provided they comply with requirements that are set for queuing, design, emissions controls, and provided they have limited hours of operation when they're located within 150 feet of a residential zone. They're not being located in areas with an over-concentration of drive-throughs or within 500 feet of a school or park, unless mitigating factors exist. And development on the property is not otherwise suitable for more intensive development that advances housing or economic goals. So if the property can advance housing or economic goals, then it doesn't allow a drive-through. So why might some jurisdictions want to ban drive-throughs? Reasons used in other jurisdictions include that they're not limited to reduced air pollution from idling vehicles, reduced litter and noise pollution, improved walkability in commercial areas, protection of small local businesses. And although health concerns were mentioned, there doesn't seem to be a lot of research connecting the reduction in fast food drive-throughs to better health and using this as an argument may be challenging. There are also reasons to support drive-throughs. Drive-throughs can provide services for people with limited mobility, including people who are disabled and elderly. They can provide services during times when no contact is preferred. Drive-throughs were open during the pandemic and provided the only takeout opportunities before restaurants were implemented curbside pickups. As a note, in Southern California, drive-through revenue increased 5% in 2020, while full-service restaurants declined 15%. Drive-throughs are patronized by both locals and tourists. And tourists who may just be driving through but not staying may be enticed to grab a meal for the road or a coffee to stay awake. Drive-throughs can also be developed on vacant properties or on properties developed with buildings that are vacant or properties that are blighted. In Eureka, for calendar year 2020, during the pandemic, seven food establishments with drive-throughs were on the top 100 sales tax producers in the city of Eureka. These establishments generated over $263,000 in revenue for the general fund. As a note, I was also curious whether when a new fast food restaurant opens, does the sales tax revenue increase? Or does it just redistribute among the existing and the new restaurants? The assumption, according to HDL, who is our sales tax consultant, is that a new restaurant would generally increase revenue. And they did indicate that while there's likely to be a certain amount of redistribution, it's probably mainly among direct competitors. So for example, a McDonald's would more likely reduce sales at Burger King versus a Starbucks. So what kind of options do we have for drive-throughs? There are a number of items on your menu that you could ask staff to research and return with a recommendation for appropriate action. And to be clear, you may have other options not included in our list that you'd like to discuss. And just because an item is included in this list, please understand there may be liability issues with going down a certain road. But if it's council's desire to pick a road, staff can research whichever road you choose and return with a recommendation. So we could consider maintaining the status quo and doing nothing. We could look at disallowing all new drive-throughs or maybe disallowing only a certain type, maybe food or beverage serving drive-throughs. We could consider restricting all drive-throughs to certain zones or restricting food or beverage serving drive-throughs to certain zones. Or we could just restrict the total number of drive-throughs allowed in the entire city or within one or more zones or one or more areas. Likewise, we could research restricting the total number of food and/or beverage serving drive-throughs allowed in the city or within one or more zones or one or more areas. Or lastly, we could look at restricting proximity to other drive-throughs. We could also consider making all drive-throughs conditionally permitted in our zones. Or conditionally permitting only a certain type of drive-through or requiring all drive-throughs comply with specific criteria or regulations. Or maybe only certain types of drive-throughs have to comply with specific criteria and regulations. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can and look forward to hearing your discussion.
All right. Questions? Councilmember Bregel.
So I'm not sure that you mentioned this. Are the drive-throughs that we have now, were they conditionally permitted or were they just permitted? Principally permitted, thank you.
In the coastal zone, drive-throughs are conditionally permitted uses. Some of the existing drive-throughs were grandfathered, so the one with the crown, for example, that one, I believe, was grandfathered in without actually having a use permit. But when the McDonald's on S Street and the Wendy's down on Broadway decided to demolish their existing buildings and rebuild, they both had to obtain use permits and coastal development permits. On the inland side of the city, generally, the drive-throughs that we have existing are principally permitted. And in most zone districts, they're still principally permitted, but drive-throughs are considered a secondary use. So they have to be associated with a primary use. So for example, you have to have the eat-in part of the restaurant, you can't just do a drive-through.
All right. I know this is going to pick up, guys, so just start. Just raise your hand. Councilmember O'Royall.
This is sort of a confirmation in the form of a question, but I just want to be sure that I'm clear and that it's clear to everyone watching. We, we're not able to change any, any outcome necessarily of a permit that's in process, right? Like, we're not talking about current applicants here. We're talking about future applicants.
I think that's correct, yes. I think it would be less than likely that we would be able to stop somebody who's in the process, provided that they've been, that their application has been deemed to complete. And the three that I mentioned to you this evening are the four actually have been deemed complete.
Okay, because I know there's a lot of community concern and interest in certain projects. So, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Castellano.
Just a little follow-up question. All of the projects you mentioned, the four incoming beverage drive-throughs and the, I don't know, how many incoming restaurant drive-throughs, are they all? You know, how far in the permitting process are they? Like, would it be possible to prevent any of them from happening?
So drive-through at Target has already been approved by the city. It's just waiting for coastal development permit from the coastal commission. The drive-throughs at T Street are going to the planning commission at their main meeting. And the drive-through and restaurant on Broadway is going to design review at their second meeting this month. Which I think is next week.
Okay, does that answer your question?
That wasn't all of, so, so the ones you didn't mention are not so far into the planning process yet. Should I be gathering that from this?
So, yeah, at this point in time, we have no other applications other than the four that I mentioned.
Okay.
Target, the two on T Street and the one on Broadway.
Councilmember Bregel. So just as a clarification, that answer was no?
Highly unlikely.
Actually, just to clarify that more, the, the direction of planning commission is, is just to see, does it follow our rules? So they don't get to really make a decision about whether they want it or not. I just kind of wanted to make sure that that was included in that, in that. If we don't have any other questions, I'll go ahead and open up public comment and then we can bring it back for discussion. So is there anybody here to talk about the drive-through options? All right, is there anybody on Zoom? Really? All right, then I will bring it back to council for discussion and direction for staff. Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I think there's a lot to discuss. I mean, there's so many options as to where we could go with this. And Principal Planner Getz, he, he laid them out pretty good. I think it's about people are concerned about a, a city of drive-throughs, you know? And I get that. And, and aesthetically, that's not what we want. So do we think about restricting the number? Do we think about conditionally permitting them so that they look a certain way? That their landscape a certain way? And do we restrict zones? You know, I, I'm all in favor of saying Old Town, Henderson Center, absolutely not. You know, we want to maintain the character of those, of those areas. And then exploring whether other areas where we have a lot of drive-throughs, that they be conditionally permitted. I don't see that as a, a problem, other than, you know, it, it'd be some, some changes. But yeah, I think we have a, a lot to think about as far as direction goes. And, you know, I see a lot of good options. So I'm just throwing out that I think things like restricting areas is a good thing. I would support that. And whether they be conditionally permitted, I, I feel like it's a little bit of a surprise. And, and maybe I'm not correct, like seeing these things and, oh, here, here they come. And it feels like there's not a lot of decision space for us, if that makes sense. Maybe they're before my time, really, in the planning process. But anyways, I'm, I think there's a lot more discussion to have. I just wanted to throw that out. Thanks.
Councilmember Bregel.
Well, I've been thinking about this a lot, and I think there may be a way to do this both and. And I think that part of that might be the restrictions. And I like the idea of potentially, potentially looking at the very be the very south end of town as people are coming in. And maybe the very north end of town, having a certain, potentially a number of drive-throughs that are allowed there. But not in our, not in our downtown, not in our old town, not in our Henderson Center, and not in our, necessarily in our, like, beret center area either. Just because tourists drive through on the 101 and, and, you know, people are going to eat what they're going to eat. But because they're driving through at all various times of the night, and people, when they're traveling, I don't know if it's the same now, but it certainly was and is for me, I usually go to places that I can trust, that I know if I'm just driving through an area, like I'll stop at Whole Foods or I'll stop at Jamba Juice or something, because I know that those are reliable places that I can go and get the same food and make it safe, you know? I generally don't stop in Leightonville at the restaurants in town or something like that. So I, I'm curious what you guys think about that, about maybe doing just, you know, a limited amount of, a limited amount of drive-throughs at one end. And this is food I'm discussing now. I'm not talking about car washes or banks or weddings. Although that could be fun. But I'm curious what, what everybody else thinks about that idea, about just maybe leaving it on the 101 at certain ends of the town.
Councilmember Castellano, then Councilmember Molton.
I mean, I think I've been pretty clear that I have a little or no interest in drive-throughs. Surprise. But, you know, I, I think personally that there are more than enough drive-throughs to meet any tourist needs, so I'm supportive of capping or disallowing all new drive-throughs, you know, especially with a special focus on food and beverage drive-throughs. But then also, I think simultaneously restricting certain areas and conditionally permitting drive-throughs, you know, if they, like, for areas where they already exist, were there to be one that, like, closes down and a new one comes in to have a conditional permit around that? That's, you know, so, so kind of, like, I guess choosing several from the menu of options.
Councilmember Molton.
I know that in Architectural Review, there's some restrictions on things like parking and based on frontage. Is there anything in the downtown, I'm sorry, in the Old Town area that would prevent something like a drive-through from happening already? Is there anything already in the code?
One moment, let me double check that for you. So in the Old Town Districts, Waterfront Commercial or CW Zone District, restaurants are principally permitted, but they do not include drive-in establishments. So they're already prohibited in the CW Zone District under the current zoning code.
And then that would, that would be Old Town, so that's from like Fourth Street down to the water? I'm sorry, Third Street?
Third Street, yes.
Down to the water. Is there anything like that in Henderson Center that would restrict, that's restricting drive-throughs already? Sorry.
That's okay. So food-serving drive-throughs not, not permitted in Henderson Center. Non-food serving are conditionally permitted. And again, only as a secondary use when they're combined with an allowed primary use.
Okay. Thank you, first, I guess, not first of all, second of all, for the thorough presentation. That was a broad question. And I think you laid out all our options and what's going on really nicely. I appreciate that. I would be in favor of restricting drive-throughs in Old Town and in Henderson Center as a sort of like walkability centers for town. And it sounds like those are already covered. I would not be in favor in restricting drive-throughs on the corridor. Eureka straddles a river of money and anything we can do to snag sales tax out of all the cars that go through every day, I am generally, I would be in favor of that. So I wouldn't want to restrict drive-throughs or most development on the corridor.
Councilmember Castellano.
Just a little clarification. Are you saying restrict new ones? Or like, you're, you're supportive of new drive-throughs at those parts of town?
If a business, if someone wants to develop a lot, that, yes, I'm supportive of new drive-throughs on developed or undeveloped lots anywhere in the corridor.
So is the corridor, can I just clarify? So the corridor you're talking about is 101. You're not talking about?
I mean, well, yeah, we're the service commercial zone, so the Broadway and then Fourth and Fifth Streets is what I would mean when I say the corridor.
Sorry, Councilmember O'Royo, I was looking up there, but your hand is right where your frame is, so I could barely see it. So you could always wave to me a little bit. I am checking on you.
Okay. Are you ready for me?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I, I like the idea personally, you know, so when we talked about the, the development that, you know, included the In-N-Out Burger and the Chipotle, that, that site, you know, there was a lot of turnout and participation from local restaurant owners and my understanding, oh, sorry, is there something in the chat that I need to know? Okay. My understanding was that, you know, at the time, one of the things we floated was the idea of a cap on formula, formula restaurants in the Old Town and Downtown area. And then, and then, you know, we did our strategic visioning and that just wasn't something that, that rose to the top. And so I think it's really a great opportunity to bring that back, because I would love to see that and what that exact district looks like or the, where the sideboards are, you know, is, I think, up for more discussion. But I'm interested in seeing a cap on the formula restaurants, which I think would, you know, certainly discourage additional, additional drive-throughs, but not necessarily forbid them in those areas. But, but as, as we just discussed, the Henderson Center and Old Town Downtown area, seems like there are already some, some restrictions in place. I understand that this is in, partly in reaction to certain developments that are already in progress, that we, we don't really, you know, have a mechanism to stop. And frankly, that I don't think it would be fair to stop, because they've already, you know, be moving the goalposts in the middle of someone developing something by what our current standards are. Which I, you know, even if people dislike the project, I don't think that's a fair way to go about it. That said, you know, I have a lot of the same concerns that folks have already mentioned. You know, wanting to balance the need to obtain tax revenue from passing, you know, motorists as well as, you know, wanting to reduce idling, wanting to, you know, support local businesses and all of the things we just talked about. So I, I think more could be accomplished by a cap on formula businesses and figuring out where the footprint of that is and could be. And I think that, you know, a lot of the businesses who heard that in our prior discussion were really excited about the prospect. So I think it could be a really great opportunity to build rapport with a lot of local businesses and to hear from them about where they think that should be. I don't think that's going to be a quick process, because I think, you know, it's going to be a, a discussion, as Councilmember Bauer pointed out. I think there's a lot to say about this. So whether or not we allow drive-throughs on parts of 101, I mean, to some degree, I think it, it's sensible to, to restrict it to those areas. And that's, you know, looking at the map, that's like largely where we're talking about anyway. That's largely where people want to develop them. You know, perhaps a concentration limit would be a way to achieve our goals, since there already are quite a few, while not seeming, you know, like we're cherry picking businesses. I mean, we really, in every, in every type of, you know, business, we see this where it's like, well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna set our rules and then let it be open to all comers, then we don't get to pick who goes where. And I think, you know, that's part of the challenge of running a city and having economic activity. So I guess I'm open to hearing other approaches, but I like the idea of a concentration limit. I like the idea of capping formula businesses as, as mechanisms to support our business community and achieve our goals.
I just want to put one thing out there, just to throw into the consideration, as we keep talking about Old Town Henderson Center and 101, but there's also the Hospital District, Harrison, and other business districts. So I don't know how thorough we want to be and if we do cap them somewhere, if they'll just move to another area that we didn't anticipate. So just in your considerations, think about those other areas.
Councilmember Bregel.
Well, again, I'd just like to reiterate that I, I think that anywhere in town is not okay. I think that if we have businesses on a certain area of the 101 corridor, that makes a lot of sense to me, because frankly, I don't want to drive through beautiful downtown and see, you know, thirteen different restaurants, fast food restaurants. But I believe if we keep it to the south end of town, the north end of town as people are coming in or as people are going out, that makes a lot of sense to me. It's already, like, the, where I was thinking of is there's a big lot right before the parking ride on the right-hand side. And I don't know, I think it's Danielson now, maybe, but used to be. I don't know if it still is. But, you know, areas like that, that are, there's that availability. And I don't want to have twenty at that end of town. But I think a, a small amount, a balance is important. And I think we can come to a balance through conversations and discussions with the community about what they are wanting. I don't, I don't think that we need to be a, a Mecca for fast food. That's not, that's not what I would agree with. But I do believe that the tax dollars and the revenues that we can receive from that, if we do it in a balanced way, is going to make a lot of sense. So again, I, I, I wouldn't want to see it all over town. I would like to keep it to South End, North End, 101. That's, that's where I'm at right now.
Councilmember Castellano.
And, and just to clarify, Principal Planner Gatz, currently, drive-throughs and, and formula drive-throughs are allowed on Fourth and Fifth Streets through the downtown area, just not in the Old Town area.
So they are, food-driven drive-through facilities are allowed in the downtown west area. They are not allowed in the downtown area. They're allowed on the east side of Broadway. And then, once you cross over, across Murrell Avenue, you're in the coastal zone and you're back to conditionally permitted drive-ins.
Great, thank you. I, you know, I, I really, I, I think that Eureka already really struggles in that downtown, or, or, sorry, that south and northern gateway areas with kind of a reputation for looking like any town, anywhere, with like formula restaurants, formula businesses. And I think if we allow more, it gives people the impression when they come to visit that Eureka's a place to stop and get a quick bite and you go on to another town where you want to spend more time. I think that's what, what it feels like and what it would feel like, especially if we allowed more. It also, I think, wherever they are in Eureka, north, south, they do a disservice to local restaurants. I don't think, like, saying like, well, just like a few more in south, southern, the south part of Eureka. I mean, sure, maybe they all compete with each other, but then maybe, like, someone would just choose to go to another one anyway. Like, I, I just don't imagine that we're limiting people's happiness by limiting restaurants, drive-through restaurants.
No, but we are limiting our tax revenues to a degree. We could be. Councilmember Bauer.
What I hear is, well, I'll say this, that, that we're kind of dealing with the legacy of what Eureka was, right? I mean, I, I think of us as being a utilitarian timber town, you know, that was hardscrabble. And, and just very, you know, like, you had your, your, your eats and your machine shops and everything on the thoroughfare. And, and that's, that's what we're, we've inherited. And now we're trying to figure out, you know, what do we want to see in the future? And I hear Councilmember Castellano talking about essentially the gateways, right? The gateway should be a beautiful thing that you see when you come in from the south or the north. But at the same time, travelers access, want to access food, you know, and, and I get both, both arguments, you know, of this, but I also get the need for revenue. We don't see businesses really demanding to be there, that, that I know of, you know? So I, and, and Councilmember O'Royo talking about limiting formula restaurants, I, I'm, I'm down with that, too. I think that's, that's something that we can explore. But, yeah, it's kind of on, what, what's the direction we want to give to staff, you know? I think revenue generation is really important. And I think limiting people's desires, I don't know. I don't know how you, how you figure that out. We have a lot of drive-throughs. But at the same time, if people want to occupy spaces like Sizzler, that's been sitting there for three years or however long now, a long time, just abandoned, then we should encourage that to be redeveloped into whatever fashion that is aesthetically okay and generates revenue.
Councilmember Castellano.
I honestly don't think we have enough information to adequately assess whether we would make more tax revenue by allowing more restaurants. I, I really think that, like, the statistics of the recent additions to the drive-through environment happened like prior to a pandemic, when, you know, things changed all over. I, I don't think we have an adequate understanding of how that affects other businesses, other people's sense of wanting to stay in Eureka. I really think, like, making this decision, saying that we're going to bring more tax revenue into the city of Eureka, based on like this little bit of information, is a bad idea.
I'd like to jump in and just remind, oh.
I, I see Councilmember O'Royo.
Yep, and I'd like to hear what city attorney, oh, city attorney.
Well, I just wanted to remind everybody, we're not making decisions today. So, you know, I, I'm hearing a lot of great feedback and I'm taking notes and I will work with Principal Planner, Planner Gatz to get additional information to, to all of you at, you know, a, a next meeting, probably not the next meeting, but an appropriate next meeting. you know, a, a next meeting, probably not the next meeting, but an appropriate next meeting, you know, answer some questions about weather and how we could potentially restrict formula businesses, you know, how we could structure some, some zoning ideas, you know, so, so bring additional information back because this is a really big and, and complicated topic. And so based on what we've heard here today, and I hope Principal Planner Gatz agrees with me, you know, we will bring back additional information so that we can, you know, further this conversation at a future time. And that was absolutely not intended to shut Councilmember Royo down.
So Councilmember, yeah.
Is it, is it me now?
Yeah, go ahead. And then I think City Manager Slattery will say something after you.
Okay, I, I, I guess I just wanted to offer to summarize a couple of the things I've heard and I, I I really appreciate where you're coming from, Councilmember Castellano. And I think it's, the point is well taken that we do need more information. So I, I was going to suggest that we, you know, it sounded like there's interest in a spatial component to this. There's interest in limiting where, where, you know, new businesses of this kind. And when I say this kind, I guess I mean like drive-through formula restaurants most likely, or drive-through restaurants perhaps in general, restaurants and beverage establishments. You know, there's interest in hearing like where could these be geographically in the city? Where could that be acceptable? You know, could we really take another look at or take a, a first look, I think, at capping the number of formula restaurants and beverage establishments in the city? Whether that's, has a spatial component or not? And then just that we want to work with the local business community to, to do this in a way that shows them a form of support rather than, you know, I, I feel like whenever we try to do something like this, it can backfire and seem like we are not business friendly. And, you know, or seem like it's all about the city's bottom line as though we're like lining our pockets with these sales tax dollars, which I assure you, we are not. So I, I guess I, I would want to have that conversation as well and invite, you know, invite a little bit more participation in this. But that's what I heard as sort of some common ground. Do you all agree?
I wrote the same notes down, Councilmember Royo. I was checking my list. I'm like, yep, she got that one. She got that one. So that was very much what I was hearing too.
I think it's a really interesting conversation and, you know, I did, yeah. I did hear from a couple of people before this meeting about their concerns about mobility and having that, that, that is a benefit, although with delivery of food, you know, that could be mitigated. But I, I heard some interesting input on this that was like actually helped me see a different side of it, you know, around, yeah, specifically like mobility needs and COVID and how it's made people reflect on, you know, wanting to support businesses, wanting to support local businesses, but wishing that they had a, a more safe-to-them way of, of getting the food, for example. So, you know, it gave me, gave me some room for thought and maybe, you know, maybe what that looks like is like a Sonic-style like drive-up, you know? I don't know. Maybe it's not a drive-through, but it's something where people won't be idling. I, I don't know what that looks like, but, you know, exploring that as a, as a, an alternative could be interesting too.
That was another thing that I was thinking about or we were talking about today was that there are drive-throughs that are not, that's ordering drive-throughs, but really just kind of the express drive-throughs where people order in advance, so you don't have the idling. If there are ways that we could reduce that, that, you know, just sitting in your car and running your car by making some requirements of new ones? I don't know what that looks like, but apparently they exist. So, City Manager Slattery.
Based on this conversation, it may be a good idea if council desires to maybe have a workshop and try and advertise that workshop and do this as its own item as a part of a workshop to have this discussion. And then that can help Principal Planner Gatz and City Attorney Luna come up with more specific options for council. It seems that you guys are have a lot of different viewpoints.
I think that sounds like a very good idea, so.
And you know, maybe we can consider, instead of drive-throughs, they could be like the old A and W when you pulled up and they put the tray on the
I think that's what she means by a Sonic-style.
Oh, okay. I'm from here. I don't know Sonic.
A facilitator conversation with more concrete information sounds really useful. Thank you.
Yeah, and in community engagement. And the fact that nobody is here tonight is really surprising because this is something that I think a lot of people care about. And of course, we're not making any decisions, but I still think that community engagement would be a All right, well, then you guys have direction. Do we need any, any closing remarks on this? Councilmember Castellano.
I just want to thank Council and Principal Planner Gatz for, you know, the presentation and discussion. I clearly, you know, feel passionately, passionately about this. But I also, you know, just appreciate the difference and the, the presentation was really fun. So thank you for making this topic kind of fun.
The menu pun was well done, Principal Planner Gatz.
It really was clever. Thank you very much. And we will now move on to future agenda items. And last time we gave staff quite a list. Do we have anything that we'd like to?
All right. So I would, I would be interested in hearing a report from the Dishgamu Humbolts about what they're doing with housing and what they're looking to accomplish. And it could just be a report, just have them come and give a talk, whether that's mayor report or, or something like that. But anybody be interested in hearing that? Yes? All right. Looks good. Thank you. Anything else?
Okay. Then we will move on to City Managers' reports. City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we are going to have a presentation from our Community Services Department related to the outstanding job they've done in securing grant funding for $6 million to upgrade 2030 Park. We've been working with the local, I mean, with a design firm and Community Services Director Wood can introduce them.
Thank you, City Manager Slattery. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Very excited to have Greg Molton and Patrick Farrar from Melton Design Group, who is the consulting firm that has been guiding the process for the last few months with our staff. We've had an extremely positive experience with this consulting firm, very collaborative, super positive, great communication, and also very patient. Thank you both for waiting a few hours for this presentation. It will be short and sweet and please, Greg, take it away.
All right. So we're going to go through this quick because I know you guys have been there a long time. So diving in this, Patrick, let's just start going through a PowerPoint and it could show the park the way it is and then where we're headed in, in our design and what our outcome is going to be for this park. So
Give me a minute as I get the slide deck loaded and share my screen.
And feel free to interrupt, raise your hands, whatever, if you want to see a little bit more or hear a little bit more. Or we can wait till the end. It's up to you guys, but we'll kind of go through it quickly for it. All right, so is that your screen fully exposed there, Patrick? There you go. So we have a great team of players along with your city. We're working with Laco along with Pace Engineering and several other vendors to make this happen. Let's roll through the slides, Patrick. You've seen your site before. These are the current conditions of the site. And, and we know that the 2030 Park's been around a long time. So I think the state also saw that it needed a bunch of upgrades. And in the community that it's at, I think they made a good decision. As you see, there's, going to the next slide, there's the equipment has been aged, aged and at some point need to be replaced. So that was also a good part to show that to the state that we needed, we needed some funding for this park and the, and your staff did a good job putting together a grant. Haney Field also very similar. I'm going to point out a couple of things here that make a lot of sense for you guys to see. One is that we had a real narrow path running on the top of the park to get from one side of the park and what I call the north parking lot into, over by Union Street to get to the Ball Diamond. We also had a corner that was very accessible to vehicles driving right into the Ball Diamond. And finally, we had very little parking for Little League at this location. So these are all some of the key things that we saw on Haney Field. Let's go on to the next one. This was our initial site design and we're going to go through some of these things. And there's currently three concepts out there now. This was just the first pass of the concepts that had all the elements in the grant. And so I'm not going to dive into this, but what I want to say is we really wanted a unique park. So we started looking at the different designs. Go ahead, Patrick. And it evolved into simpler design work and spreading things out in a bunch of different ways. But then we really are saying, what's going to inspire this park to where it's just not turf and play equipment? We wanted something to give it a theme. So we looked at your community. We looked at all the elements of the community, whether it was the wharfs, the dunes, the, the redwoods. You have a great boardwalk, the ocean, the different elements of the beach, the marsh. You had a great presentation on the estuary earlier. That's an exciting project. And not to mention old rundown piers. So there are a lot of elements we started grabbing to move on to our designs. And as those designs evolved, go ahead. We started to get into some fun. So this is Concept 2. And in pointing out Concept 2, we really wanted to focus on creating what we call the Marsh Playground. And the number one star of the Marsh Playground is the egret. Really developed from the egret rucheries that you have there, the estuaries, all the animals and fish and other things that go with it, whether it's the oysters or the salmon, plant material, et cetera, et cetera. So that was one of the big elements. We wanted to do some work out on California to make that area more inviting and open. We wanted to do a multi-sport court that would, God, that was the hardest part of the project. We had hockey, basketball, soccer, all these people wanted things. So we really had to work hard to do that, not to mention adding a restaurant and some type of stage event space. So Concept 2 began to evolve and we started doing renderings to capture those themes. And those renderings started to show up like this. On the top, you're looking at a section through our playground from the south end of the site in the parking lot, going through what we're now considering a multi-use court into our egret playground, which actually has a 20-foot egret slide play structure in it, going to the entry, which was originally a gray whale, but we found out, I think it was, some of the other coastal cities had a gray whale. So we decided to go differently. And really create a nice entry, as you see on the bottom, with more cypress trees and more key elements that really captured the community. So the inspiration started to evolve. And this is really just the marsh design. So you can see the standing egret here in the center, a boardwalk that you would walk to to get into the egret. So it would be accessible by wheelchair, not to mention any other disabilities that you had. So a very inclusive playground. The entrance at the top went to a salmon with salmon roe and other play elements that the kids could play with. We're going to have that rubberized fall material. So in that fall material, we wanted it to look like a marsh and to have a lot of the things you would see in a marsh from tulies to the fish that would actually just be shadows in the play, in the play fall material. So really theme it out to where it's a lot of fun. We wanted a big swing complex. I think swings are one of the funnest things in, in parks. And now we have, you'll see later, we have basket swings that are super fun for little kids. We have friendship swings where you can actually face each other and swing back and forth with your kid or your loved one. And then you have your typical strap swings that when I was a kid, you'd swing as high as you could and jump off as high as you possibly could and hope not break anything on your way down. So this is really kind of an active part of the park. And then we kind of got into the theme play. And then on this other side, we have more of a natural obstacle course. We'll show you some pictures of that, but something where kids could challenge each other or challenge by time. And, but they'll be running on natural materials, logs, ropes, boulders, things like that. And there's about a four-foot, five-foot elevation change on this obstacle course. And then finally, we wanted to incorporate some more spinners, other fun play. We'll show you some of that and wheelchair accessible play. So you have a very inclusive playground. It's everything, you know, all age groups, and we'll explain that a little bit more. So go ahead, Patrick. And on the second, we needed to look at Haney Field. And Haney Field had a lot of issues on its, in, on its, with itself, especially that narrow walkway I showed you earlier. So now we created the Salmon Plaza here to where, which was once a little eight-foot walkway. Now we have a minimum opening of 20 feet, so it's very safe now connecting the dots between the two parks. It is shaped in plan view, but the green here is going to be, you'll see on some of the renderings, a lot of our stormwater captured. There is some sensitive environmental elements we needed to deal with. But then we also wanted to bring the spectator into a closer area to watch the baseball, not just big tall fences around the whole park. So the park really is getting engaged. And not to mention the new plaza out at the corner, which is safe and blocked from the traffic. So I'm going to again, keep going because we have some prettier pictures to show this. So this Concept 3 continued to evolve into our latest design. And, you know, working with Donna and the staff and Jeff and Robin, it's all been really good communicating. So you can kind of see the whole park here in one picture. And so I'm just going to start on the top and roll along it. We got Haney Field. Like we said, we are now a 50/70 field, which is a little bigger than the normal Little League. So it, it serves a few more purposes. We have a nice Haney Plaza as you come in, so you don't park cars here anymore. You now park on an angular parking lot. Public Works has been a great team to work with. They're allowing us to take a little bit of the right-of-way to extend the parking into that and also calm the traffic in this corner. So it'll be a little narrower driving, slow things down around the park. So the, so Haney Field is really getting an uplift. We'll be redoing the irrigation and the turf in the field also, along with bleachers and the backstops and the dugout. So it's going to get a nice upgrade for the Little League. Moving on here, now you see Salmon Run as it evolves. So it runs into the restroom plaza. So Salmon Run Plaza kind of connects the parks together. And as you evolve through that, we have the north parking lot. We'll have electrical vehicle chargers on this parking lot. We'll have stormwater captures, all the runoff on the parking lot will go into areas to capture that water and replenish our aquifers. We also have some homeowners that need some access. We're allowing for. And as you move around, we have a fitness station. Again, these are all things that were approved in the grant when it was first created. And that came from many public meetings that Robin and Donna and Jeff created. Continuing to evolve, we have the 2030 Plaza over here. And we call it the 2030 Plaza because we want to rename the park into something else, but we want to maintain some capture of the 2030 who originally developed the park and give them their due with interpretive signage on how the park came together, when it came together. But this area off of California Street allows moms and dads maybe to play in a little area without going into the center of the park. If they just want to stay in their little neighborhood on this side, it gives them a nice little area that's now open. We've taken out those large U's. And so now as you drive up, you'll be able to see into the park. The sunken play zone, grass play area, so we got volleyball. So we got volleyball, youth soccer, you can play around. And it's not large enough for a soccer match. It's just a nice little area to go and play frisbee, let your dogs run, have fun. Rotating around, you see the central play area. That's our marsh play area. The egret is the star, of course, but we now have the salmon. We have some oyster shells that'll be there to climb on as some of our two to five play. Not to mention those other elements I spoke of from the swing complex to the spinners. Our south parking lot, we now will have a paved accessible parking lot coming in from that side. So that's a really need that we have there. Currently, it's all gravel. And then our multi-use game area, this is something that you currently see and it's very bright and colorful. So we're looking at doing something other than gray concrete there. We want to really make it fun and break the lines up. So as you're, as you're playing, you'll, you'll see the different games all portrayed with the different colors. And again, this will cover roller hockey, basketball, full-court basketball, foots all. And then not to mention the opportunities we have for art. Okay, Patrick, let's look at some of these things. We have blowups of a lot of these. Haney Field, here's a quick sketch. This was an early sketch. It's being evolved now, but you can see we created a little protective wall out towards the street as we bowled out into the street. So now people can be back there and feel safe away from the vehicles. We're creating the signage on top of the park instead of just a low little sign in the middle. So it's really much more of an attractive place to come. There is a plaza there. And then we want to put some flags on top that would actually be steel flags. So they would appear to be blowing in the wind and be bright and colorful. And then the rest of the, the walls will be maintaining and we'll be doing some artistic murals. Most of that is a painted mural with an additional brick bases. Cause we get a lot of vandalism on the base of the wood. So we want to do something that will be real durable and withstand long-term use. Next, we have the, the Salmon Plaza. So here's kind of an enlargement. Coming into the north parking lot, we have a drop-off into the Salmon Plaza, a restroom with concession, storage and three unisex toilets. These, these restroom doors can be opened and locked from anywhere that your maintenance staff has available. So it's not like going in and having three stalls where you find two homeless in the stalls and you feel threatened. You had now have a restroom to yourself without having that issue. On the park inside, we do have a little stage area. So if we want to do concerts of some sort, we have that set up on this side. As you go towards the Little League field, we have great viewing now of Little League, a brief eight feet off the foul line. So yes, foul balls are a reality. That's why you're watching the game. New dugouts and bullpens for warm-up for the kids. Currently, there's a big area here for the warm-up. So we are reducing that down to a little smaller space. And then you can see the salmon, which is cut out of the concrete and different concrete treatments kind of show the, the fish in the ground there. And then the green areas is where we're capturing the storm water runoff. Working with Laco, the civil engineer, we need to provide some of those green spaces in our plazas to capture water. Here's our view of the California Street play area. It's a, it's basically a climbing globe for all ages, two to 12. And we do have fall material. So if that guy on top jumped off, he's totally safe and you're totally covered. And we do have a bus stop and drop at California Street already there. And now we don't have the big trees there, so you'll be able to see right into the park. And we did want to do a little bit of a mounding there for a seating and planting of more trees. So California Street has a nice little, a little play zone. There's a quick view of the marsh from the north parking lot. So we'll have signage on it. So there's some identity in the background. You can see the two egrets, like I said, one standing and one's bent over and fishing. You're about to see those guys. Here are the spinners over to the left. So you'll have a lot of fun with that, the obstacle course. And then that all rolls off to group picnic areas that are situated in and amongst the marsh, along with other planting. Down here, you see the standing egret. This was some preliminary renderings we did to show the playground companies that we're working with. So we've been interviewing different playground companies that could build these custom structures. And we've got a great one. So in this, you can see the accessible wheelchair, the mounted areas. The playground is not flat. There's over a five-foot elevation change just on the soil level up and down. And we have the salmon that you can climb on, the roe as part of the entry. And like I mentioned, we've been working with the different playground companies to make this reality and get a real budget for it. So let's show that. Oh, sorry, here's a couple more views. The standing egret, again with climbers, a slide coming out of the egret. So you climb up into the back. We have a boardwalk. Our posts that hold up the boardwalk are looking like tulies. Great photo opportunities, right? This egret's got climbing and a slide and a nest underneath. So these were some vision sketches that we did. And our playground company has turned that into reality for us. It's a little, not as organic at this point. This is an element we just got a few days ago. They got back to us. So at this point, we're, we're working with them to get to that rendering that you just saw. So there'll be a few more iterations beyond this one to get where we wanted to go. You can see that there's the, the feeding egrets feeding on a fish. We've got the standing egret with the wing spread that are real climbing. Keep going, Patrick. We got a boardwalk to run on. Here's the egret slide. You actually go through the neck of the egret coming out the bottom. And then his head is eating, fishing after the little fish that are in the, the marsh. We'll have marsh plants, cutouts onto the steel. Here's the back of the bird. So it does have wings and tail feathers that you can climb up on. So very interactive in and amongst the slides. We have different climbers on this side that get you up and out of the boardwalk. Not to mention the wheelchair access, access up on this side that brings you across to both. So a very inclusive play. You can see the back of the standing egret here. Inside that would have little mini binoculars. You'll be able to look out. You can see your kid up there playing. And so it's quite a fun structure. And again, this is still in the preliminary stages. We're evolving it to make sure we get all the fun out of these that we can. Any other play, Patrick? I think this is our last play, egret structure, right? So these are some of the other elements, the quad spinner. This is about 15 feet across. And then not only can it spin like the old merry-go-rounds, but it has individual cage spinners inside that you can spin yourself going a different direction. So it definitely challenges the the dizziness factor for some people. Some people eat it up, some will get on it and want to get off, but it's super fun. This other roll-on spinner here is you have your friends on it. If you're in your wheelchair, you just roll right onto it and grab on and you're able to spin just like anybody else. But you're in a wheelchair now. We have the rubber fall material underneath everything. Thank you. We have our obstacle course will be made out of locusts. It's a very hardwood and a very fun. It kind of ends up looking like the relic piers you have out in the bay. So we're trying to mimic some of that look. Boulders, fitness stations, et cetera, et cetera. I'm going to just keep it rolling. Here's our multi-use game area. These are examples of other gaming areas. We'll have a nice fence around this. Again, you'll be able to play full-court basketball, half-court basketball, and you have extra basketball on the outside in case it's being used for hockey on a regular basis like that. So very multi-use to the community. Patrick, do you want to dive into the art elements of this?
Yeah, they're hopefully hearing me okay, yes?
Yep.
Yes, we can hear you.
Very good. Yeah, so I'll give Greg a breather there. And there's a lot of other elements we were deep into play here, but working with the stakeholders and closely with the community services, they're tying us into other ways to make this park themed and special for Eureka. These are just examples of art and that can be done. And we have even had a meeting today trying to locate where those art pieces can go. So going back to what Greg presented earlier, we did a further refinement of the what, you know, what is driving some of our design and theming? And some of it's urban, you know, that's, that's part of our environment. And so that led us to our plant material, which is another component, another layer of design. I won't spend a lot of time here, but we have quite a few natives. I think I've only counted two non-natives and then they are adapted to the area. So with careful selection, we're self-curating this. Also had a meeting with local representatives of Wiat, looking at what plants have cultural and significant meaning to them. We have their list, their plant list. We're trying to use their names where appropriate so that there's both their language and the language we're used to speaking. How many languages we show, not decided. But we also identified one species, the Labrador tree. It's not really in the wild in the area, but has grown historically. So I think we'll be able to find a place to make a patch for that, so to speak, and kind of almost reintroduce it into the area in our park. And we were very happy to speak with them and gave us a lot of insight. So again, a lot of these plants may or may not be familiar with you as we go through the park. The design that Greg showed will have moisture areas and drier areas and those areas that kind of mimic those upland or wet areas or meadow and will plant appropriately. So that lands us here back to where we started. We just finished the submittal of the 60% construction documents. Have received plan review from Public Works, the billing department. Even I believe planners on the phone now. So as we go into the next phase, we'll be doing more of this work, tightening up the cost decimating and make sure that we deliver a project and that's appropriate for the city and also meets the guidelines of the grant, which I don't think there's any issue there whatsoever. Anyway, that is our presentation today. This is part of a larger booklet that will be out shortly. And this is kind of abbreviated look today.
Thank you very much. I, we don't normally take public comment, but I know we have somebody here who might want to make public comments. So we'll ask questions. We'll just do it just like it's a regular report. So first we'll ask council if they have any questions. I don't see Natalie, so Natalie, just speak up if you do. All right, it sounds like we're okay. And then we will ask for public comment. Come on in if you want to. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I assume that was kind of why you're here, so.
Mike here is from Eureka. I've lived around 2030 Park for almost 40 years. Seen a lot of stuff come and go. I see a lot of damage to the park and which cost the city a lot of money to repair. And some people in the city say that's normal park maintenance, which it's not. If you're going to spend a lot of money on a park, you need to put a fence around it to secure the park at nighttime. So we don't have the bad boys or the bad whoever go in the park and cause park maintenance to be destroyed. You know, we don't need damage to the park. We need to protect the park. It's like saying, let's take our doors off our houses. No, we put our doors on to keep, keep people out and keep our house safe. So we need to, if we're going to spend a lot of money on this park, then we need to secure it to save the money that we put into it. We don't need no damage. We need to protect it. And how to do that is put a fence around it. Every day I go look in the park and I see people in there camping out, have to call the police. I see people in there doing graffiti, have to call the police. All kinds of stuff, including damage to the baseball park area. So that's my comment on it. We need a fence around it to protect our investment, right? Investment, the park is an investment. So if we don't do that, why should we redo the park? Does anybody know what 2030 means?
Yes.
What does it mean?
Do you want to share? Do you know?
What does it mean?
Look at me engaging, I'm sorry.
What's 2030 mean?
After you sit down, I'll answer.
It means a group of men who at first started working on the park, keeping ice. And were men between the ages of 20 and 30. So that's where it comes from. And when they did the park, they tore down a lot of Victorian houses that were in there. And they closed off a lot of the streets like West Olson, all that. So anyways, if we're going to protect our park, we need to put a fence around it. Just like you have a door in your house or a fence around your house. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now we'll bring it back. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you for this presentation. It's always really nice to see like the visual renderings of the things that we hear and are excited about, so. Councilmember Castellano?
Maybe you mentioned this already, but could you just remind me the kind of the time until construction? Or someone?
Sure, we're, we're, we're going to be designing all year and out to bid first of the year. And then we'll start construction early spring next year.
Councilmember Bragel? I just have a comment. Thank you so much for your great presentation. I'm really excited about the spinners. I know that some of our kids, some of the kids that I've worked with in the past that have autism or different problems like that, the spinning really calms them. And so it's a great inclusion piece to the park. And I love that, I loved when you said that the wheelchair could get on the spinner too. I just am so excited about the opportunity for our kids. I'm just super excited. So thank you so much for all the hard work. This has been great.
Thank you.
I also want to say, and I've said this time and again, but I live near Hammond Park. Hammond Park used to be pretty rough. They put in a little playground, things immediately approved. Then the city came in and redid the basketball courts. And we don't have problems. We don't have problems at night. I don't, I don't see graffiti. So unless the city goes first thing in the morning and cleans it up, I don't see people creating problems there. The whole environment has changed in the neighborhood because of the improvements to the park. So it's, so I'm, I'm a believer now. I'm a total believer that when you invest in your parks, that your neighborhood uses it. And when the people you want using the parks are using them, then the people you don't want using the parks, they're not as interesting to them anymore. So that's always been very cool to me. Council, oh, Councilmember Moulton and then Councilmember Castellano.
No, I'm just cheering what you just said. Was that public safety through environmental design? Get people out and playing and that helps a lot.
Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, just thanks for this. I'm so excited for this park and for the community around it and for all of the different ways to interact. And I think there could be some really cool options for like community fitness classes and things with the fitness equipment. You know, and just different ways of engaging and building community around the park as well, which to me, that's kind of the heart of parks is how they, the community flourishes around them, so.
City manager reports, there are no rules anymore. Any other thoughts before we move on? All right, well, thank you so much. And we're going to hold you to it next year. See this bill, we're going to be excited.
Amen.
And City Manager Slattery, anything else?
Well, that's it. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, well, then we will move on to our council reports. And we will go ahead and start with Councilmember Castellano.
All right, I'm just going to be quick tonight. There's a Wow Bash cleanup on April 30th. And I know there's another cleanup next weekend. I bet another council member will speak to that. And I've been attending meetings related to housing and HWMA and the Redec Executive Committee and Arts and Culture. So if you, if anyone wants to talk to me about those, let me know. Happy to talk your ear off. And, oh, also I'm planning a town hall meeting. I don't have the date yet, so I will announce it at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. I have no reports, but I would like to invite people out to the April 30th Highland Park cleanup. It's happening from 9:30 to 11:00 in the morning at Highland Park. I'll be out there with some friends adding more and more native plants to our mural painting. Not real plants, painted plants, but they do have real plants in there. And you can come help us weed the lavender. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bauer?
And there will be another cleanup on April 23rd.
And there will be another cleanup on April 23rd at Cooper Gulch Park, we're meeting in the parking lot at 9:30. Vasive plant removal, trash removal, it'll be a good time. And then I just want to say one thing, I wanted to thank Officer Swanson. He helped out in a, a mental health crisis that affects one of my wife and, and her coworkers, and I just appreciate EPD for being there, it couldn't, it was a bad situation, and I just probably the most important thing is, you know, we're in a mental health crisis right now. And it's affecting a lot of really great people in our community. And I, I'm a pledge to, to work on that until we get some resolution, because it's become crisis, it's the worst it's ever been, and people are getting hurt. And I'm tired of it, and, and so we, we gotta figure it out, and, and as a community beyond the city. We gotta work with our, our county representatives, and I'd be happy, if anyone wants to, you know, write me, want to talk about it, want to help out, I'd appreciate it, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bragel?
I too don't have much to report, but thank you for your comments, I think that that's critical, you know, I, listening to public comment tonight, and so many times, listening to public comment. I think that it's important to remember that, you know, I believe that like 50% of the problems of our region are mental health related. And so to name-call or to do the things that I hear in these meetings sometimes, just blows my mind when we're talking about human beings. And I too am, am working on different opportunities for mental health, because that's where, that's where healthy community builds each other up, and that's and we're, you know, we work well together, we just gotta get together and get this, this thing under control. Let's see, I went to the Humboldt Bay Fire Meeting, which is always interesting and great, and then I did jump in the bay, thank you Terry, with, with the president of Positivity, and the president of Positivity wasn't gonna jump in the water, we almost had to push her, but she just, she, she finally caved just at the last moment. But I just want to say thanks to everybody that came out to go in the bay and to, and everybody that pledged, you know, to change our community, I think it really involves changing how we interact with our kids, and I, that's one thing I appreciate about our mayor, is that you know, it's about the kids, it's about making a difference in our kids' lives, and changing the ace's scores, changing the opportunities for our kids. Because that's gonna create our better future, and yeah, so thank you, everybody that came out, it was super duper fun, as it always is, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Royo?
Hi, everyone. It's a little funny to be participating by Zoom, I just feel like it's been nice to be back in the chambers with you all. The reason I'm not there is I'm at a fisheries conference in Santa Cruz, and I will actually be speaking briefly at the conference about ways to encourage other local governments to engage their elected officials in supporting their restoration efforts. So watershed restoration projects in their communities. So I'll be, I'll be sharing some lessons learned about that, and hopefully seeing other folks consider, you know, building those relationships to support watershed restoration. And then I'll be learning a lot about fisheries restoration from the professionals, so I'm excited about that. And I also, let's see, do, 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 I had the opportunity to meet with Senator McGuire and talk about some of the mental health resources that the state is, is providing and can provide in the region, and some new state programs that the governor's been talking about, that was really helpful, and Councilmember Bauer, I'd love to work with you on that, and I'd love to share what I learned. I'd love to share what I learned with all of you. But essentially, well, I'll just say right now that, you know, he talked about the governor's care court program, and how, you know, there's a lot of unknowns there, basically. The governor unveiled a new program, and then it's not exactly clear how it'll be implemented, and you know, how it'll walk that fine balance between ensuring that people are supported and get the care they need, and making sure to respect people's autonomy and civil rights. So we had a good conversation about it, and then talked about some other projects and funding opportunities coming our way to address mental and behavioral health in Humboldt County, so it was really really helpful and interesting, and brief, as conversations with Senator McGuire often are, but really action-packed. I got to go, this, you know, this didn't pertain to Eureka, but it did, it did showcase something cool, I went to the ribbon cutting for the new Vance Avenue parklet, so many of you may be familiar with the like turnout on Vance Avenue on the Manila side, just north of the Smo Bridge, which is often a dumping location. And in some other work I've been doing in the community, I've been working on cleaning up the beaches and dunes in our area, and ensuring that there aren't so many issues of sustained dumping. So that is a site where we asked Caltrans to do things differently and to use that property in a new way, and when I say we, I mean like the whole community that had been working together on that issue. Including full credit where credit is deserved, Pam and Ted Halsted, who clean up that area on the regular. And Caltrans is doing it, so they're removing a lot of paving there, they're changing the parking configuration, they're making it more of a mini park right on the bay, so it's cool to feel heard and to see that the funding source, the Clean California funding source can be used for that. That was something independent from another peninsula-related Clean California-funded project. But it was just a kind of a standalone thing that Caltrans took the initiative to do after hearing community concerns, so I'm really excited for what that says about how Caltrans is listening to the community, and I'm also excited about the project itself. So I thought I'd share that, and there's gonna be in the near future an anti-dumping campaign Humboldt Baywide that we'll get to participate in. Let's see. The, I just want to plug the upcoming, it's, it's a couple weeks away, a few weeks away, but the Eureka Chinatown project is gonna have a dedication of some new new improvements to the Eureka Chinatown space, and I think that'll be really exciting, some more to, to be shared about that on the first meeting in May. And then I've been working closely with them on some proclamation language and and just acknowledging our history in new and different ways, and then there'll be the, the celebration for the belated Lunar New Year celebration. The evening of, afternoon and evening of May 7th in Old Town, so I'm really excited that that's happening. And I think that's all I want to highlight, I just want to make sure everybody has that cool event on May 7th on their calendars. And I hope some of you are gonna be in the roadie parade, I'm gonna skate in it, so I'm really excited about that. So I think I'll call it there.
Right on. Well, it sounds like we all have a lot on our plates, so let's get to work, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.